Mayor Feng, can you hear me?
We can hear you, Councilmember Snyder.
Okay, just letting the mayor know that I may have to step away. I'll try to hang on as long as I can. And the city clerk asked me to just text Tom when I'm leaving.
I got you there, Councilmember Snyder.
Thank you. Thank you.
Councilmember Snyder, you would have to announce for the public record that you'll be leaving the meeting.
Okay. I may not have that much time. I'll do my best.
Okay, well, why don't we get started? Maybe we should get started. Okay, welcome to the April 23rd, 2024 Millbury City Council meeting.
Recording in progress.
Welcome to the April 23rd, 2024 Millbury City Council meeting. I'd like to call this meeting to order at 7:06 PM. City clerk, did you receive any updates and requests for virtual participation from members of the city council?
Yes, Mayor, I did receive a request from Councilmember Snyder.
Okay, thank you, City clerk. Councilmember Schneider, there are a few legal requirements to participate remotely, and the city clerk had prepared three questions to address these requirements for you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Snyder, please generally describe the circumstance relating to the need to participate remotely.
I have the stomach flu.
And please confirm that you will have audio and video throughout the meeting.
Yes.
And lastly, please disclose if there are any individuals over the age of 18 present in the room, and if so, the general nature of their relationship to you.
No one is present in the room.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Schneider. Thanks for joining us, and I wish you feel better soon. City clerk, would you please do a roll call?
Councilmember Snyder.
President.
Councilmember Pappan. Councilmember Cahalan.
Here.
Vice Mayor Goodman.
Here.
Mayor Feng.
Here.
All members of the city council are present.
And please stand for the pledge of allegiance for those who are able. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. So we'll get started in this meeting today with ceremonial presentation. And we will start with the proclamation proclaiming the month of May as Asian Pacific American Heritage Month. And this is always a favorite for the May of every year. And today, we have our San Mateo County Library Manager Jess Koishi Lum joining us today to receive this proclamation. Thank you so very much for joining us. And just as you begin your address today, I just wanted to thank you and the library for your partnership. As I understand, it's been working for a while now with the idea of bringing about more civic engagement and civic education to our ethnic community and our immigrant community. And very happy to announce that beginning sometime in May, I think it's May 13. Yes, and that's the day we were first time for us to be able to work with the San Mateo County Library to provide citizenship classes in Chinese. You know, this is exactly where we're meeting our community where they are, where they need to be. It's an idea that I had since last year and been working with you for a while to put this together and bring the resource and all the preparation that is needed in order to serve the community who needed the service the most. So obviously, I love a good celebration for the API Heritage Month, but at the same time, delivering the service just what they need, it's much more meaningful and much more impactful to the progress that we have been wanting to make. So with that, thank you so much for joining us, Ms. Lum.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, if you have a, you would like to say a few words, a lot more than happy to have you.
Absolutely. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of city council and Millbury community. My name is Jess Koishi Lum, and I'm your Millbury Library Manager. I am so deeply honored and humbled to accept this proclamation, recognizing Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month on behalf of our vibrant and diverse community. This month serves as a celebration of our rich cultures, traditions, and contributions that have enriched the tapestry of our city. From the perseverance of our ancestors to the innovation of our present generation, we stand as a testament to the strength and resilience of our communities. At the library, we have so much to look forward to in the month of May in honor to celebrate the diversity of our community. Here are some of our highlights. Starting on Wednesday, May 15th, at 3:30, we will be hosting a dance workshop on Ziva Sasa, a traditional Samoan dance. On Sunday, May 19th, at 2, we will host an ukulele jam where you can learn ukulele basics. No experience is necessary, and we look forward to being in community with you. Lastly, I would like to thank our library staff for their hard work and creativity, our friends of the library for their dedication and advocacy, and our city council and our city staff for their ongoing support. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you so very much. Would you like to join us at the podium for a photo? And next up, we have the proclamation proclaiming the month of May as National Historical Preservation Month. And we have Vice Mayor Goodman, would you like to say a few words for us? Thank you.
Yes. Preservation Month began as National Preservation Week in 1973. In 2005, the National Trust extended the celebration to the entire month of May and declared it Preservation Month to provide an even greater opportunity to celebrate the diverse and unique heritage of our country's cities and states. And the National Historic Preservation Month provides an opportunity to raise awareness about the importance of historic preservation and recognize the dedicated efforts of individuals and organizations who champion the preservation of our built environment. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And today, we are honored to have our Millbury Historical Society President, Mr. John Muniz, accepting the proclamation. Please join us at the podium, Mr. Muniz.
Thank you, Mayor Feng, City Council. My name is John Muniz, President of the Millbury Historical Society. History is not merely a collection of dates and events. It is the shared knowledge of our past. It serves as the story of who we are, where we came from, and can even provide insights to where we are headed. Let us use the history of the great city of Millbury, for example. After World War II, prior to Millbury Corporation in 1948, we were still noted for flower orchards, lettuce fields, gambling, and a brothel. We had two haunted mansions, the Mills Mansion and the Dunphy Mansion, a dairy with cows, a house at Number One Lewis Avenue built in 1865, the same year Abraham Lincoln was assassinated, an airport with planes with propellers. We had the West Coast porcelain factory and the Royal Container Company, where the Millbury Station is now. Never had a movie theater until 1949, when the Millbury Theater was built. For a dime, one could take the Number 40 Streetcar from Millbury to Fifth and Market Street in San Francisco or south to San Mateo. Bart can't even do that. Seventy-six years later, Millbury has grown up into a diverse, multicultural, a transportation hub with outstanding schools, beautiful recreational facilities, a vibrant downtown business community. Soon, we will become a life science hub. Icon Technologies will call Millbury their corporate headquarters, waiting with anticipation for TOD-1, the TOD-1 dispute, to settle in Millbury's favor so we can continue to develop our economic base and prosper into the future. Want more information about Millbury's colorful history? Go to millbryhs.org or drop by one of our three museums. The Millbury Historical Society Museum across from the library, open on Saturday from 12 to 4. The Millbury Museum and Carriage House behind the Millbury Museum. Or the Millbury Railroad Museum located on California Drive and Murchison Drive, open 10 to 2. I want to thank all the members of the Millbury Historical Society and the board for doing their diligent work and preserving the history of Millbury. Thank you so much.
You know, John, we're always so proud of you because not only you're resourceful, you always carry a good sense of humor for all of us. So with that, please join us at the podium for a photo. All right. So next up, we have the proclamation proclaiming the month of May as Mental Health Month. And we have Councilmember Cahalan to say a few words for us.
Thank you. This is such an important issue in our community, and I'm sure, you know, every single one of us in this room is touched by this among our family and our friends. You know, mental health is an essential component of overall well-being, and every individual deserves access to resources, support, and care to maintain good mental health. And mental health conditions affect people of all ages, backgrounds, and walks of life, impacting not only individuals, but also their families, friends, and communities. Every day, millions of people face stigma related to mental illness, causing many to face their mental health challenges alone for years if left untreated. Every business, school, government agency, healthcare provider, organization, and citizen share the burden of untreated mental health conditions and benefit greatly from promoting wellness and supporting prevention efforts.
Oh, good, thank you so much. And so we have the San Mateo County Mental Health Month Planning Committee Member, Letitia Bido, joining us today. Please join us at the podium.
Yes, I'm a planning member, and I'm also, just want to share that I'm delighted. Firstly, thank you, mayors, mayor and council staff, council members' staff, as well as the residents of the city of Millbury. My name's Letitia Bido. I am a, I also, I serve on the committee for Mental Health Month, and I'm also a commissioner for the Behavioral Health Commission for San Mateo County. And I'm really delighted that the city of Millbury is taking time to really recognize the importance of celebrating and proclaiming Mental Health Month. Thank you very much, Councilmember Callahan. You shared greatly, we are all affected. We are all affected. There's, you know, and it's really health is what we're, you know, health and well-being is really the, is where we get to really focus on, that mental health is absolutely core to our health and our well-being. And as a member of the Behavioral Health Commission, we are committed to the goals of promoting wellness and recovery, also addressing the, really expanding on the public awareness and the knowledge of mental health and substance use conditions, eliminating stigma. And what we do as a commission collaboratively, and of course, with the support of cities and initiatives, we really ensure that there is a careful attention to the quality of the mental health services and really to ensure that we are all doing what we can to really improve the services and to ensure that there isn't, that there is no suffering in silence, but that we all are really invested in the mental well-being of our community. And then also, what I wanted to share specifically, this lime green ribbon. I just wanted presents that, you know, that is what we wear in support. And I want to invite the community of Millbury to certainly, where you have available, to show your support. And also, there's events upcoming for the month of May. There's a website that I want to bring everyone's attention to, and it's smchhealth.org/mhm, Mental Health Month. So again, it's smchhealth.org, and it's /mhm. And personally, for me, I just want to share, there've been, you know, certainly moments in my life, I can think very early as an adolescent, really desiring someone else outside the family to speak to about, you know, situations at home. And even moving forward to, you know, being in college and being very grateful that there are services on the college campus that really help you kind of go through moments in life that are difficult or uneasy. And, you know, just in all aspects, I think of even as an adult being a first-time mom, you know, and just the pressures of that. And so really, if we can look at, you know, it's just really important for us to do what we can, to be there for our neighbors, to also have for ourselves just that opportunity to share and to seek services as we need them for our mental well-being. And so what we're doing tonight, I think, is important. And I just want to commend the council, council members, and the mayor, and everyone here to please join us in support of the many community events that are happening throughout the month of May. And more importantly, we can all do something more to support not only our own mental well-being, but that of those that are in our lives. And just want to thank you again and really appreciate your time.
Thank you so much, Ms. Bido. Please join us at the podium for a photo. Okay, next up, I had the privilege to be invited to join a dedicated group of volunteers on April 10th. Every year, April is certainly a time where spring comes along, but at the same time, it reminds us of our taxes. And it certainly is a favorite subject for these following volunteer who's been doing this year in, year out. And I was just so honored to be invited by one of our active members of our community, Jean Wong, to attend the AARP Tax Aid Group, who has been helping our community members with their taxes for a long time. And so with that, also, at the same time, you know, all the volunteers, I'd like to just kind of point out a few names. Mr. Jim Cole, Donald Danes, Catherine Danes, and Jean Wong. And also joining on Zoom today is we got Lisa Duncan. And tentatively, we have a couple others who has been, obviously, dedicating a lot of their time in assisting our members in the community is Dorothy Browning and Catherine Deveraux. So with that, you know, specifically, I want to just kind of point out someone who has been dedicating for 13 years of his time as a district coordinator, Mr. Jim Cole, and he's retiring at the end of May. After 13 years of tenure, we want to thank you very much and wish you the best of luck. And with Jim's background, you know, in case you'd like to mention any of those following detail, if you don't mind, he is a San Mateo County District Coordinator, and he has been managing 16 Tax Aid sites located throughout the entire county. And his district completed tax returns for 3,600 individuals and family this last tax season. In addition to these responsibilities, he's also the local coordinator and site coordinator for the Lincoln Community Center here in Daly City. Jim is truly an amazing individual, and in his role as a district coordinator, he coordinates annual county-wide tax counseling, training, and certification, ensure that we have the proper equipments and IT support, and provides updates on tax laws, changes and updates, and publishes monthly newsletters during tax seasons and periodic ones throughout the year. He's also a volunteer at the San Carlos Children's Theater, where he is a resident technical director. So with 3,600 family in complete thankfulness of your dedicated volunteerism and services. We're here at the Millbury City Council, command all of you volunteers for a great tax season and many years of service to our community. Please join us. We have a commendation for each and every one of you today, if you would join us at the podium today. Do you have a representative would like to say a few words? Maybe Jim? I don't want to put you on the spot.
I'm the, my name's Catherine Danes, and I'm the local coordinator here at Millbury. I've been doing this now for four years with my husband, who is our client facilitator, and he's the one that lugs all the printers and stuff around for us. I want to thank you all for doing this. It's an honor for us, and we really appreciate it. But it's actually fun, so, you know, I know, doing taxes is fun, really. Anyway, I want to thank especially Hannah and Jeff. They've been so good to us. They set the room up, they deal with the schedule, they deal with the clients, and we wouldn't, we wouldn't be as good as we are without them. And also, I want to thank all my counselors, Jean, especially our new counselor, Lisa Duncan, Catherine Deveraux, and of course, Dottie Browning. Dottie's been around for a long time. She helps with everything. She's also our county administrator, so. And also, I have some statistics, of course, because we like math. We have processed 199 returns this year. The average adjusted gross income for those returns was $49,000. And I don't honestly know how people can live here on that amount of money. And the total refund amount was $138,000. And that was an average refund of $970 per person or per family. And the average age of 60 and over, we had 65% of our clients were 60 years or older. So would you like to say anything?
Yeah.
Okay.
So AARP Foundation is the apparent organization of AARP Tax Aid, and their goal is to end senior hunger in the United States. And so even though we will do taxes for anybody who comes in and meets in our scope of work, our focus is really the seniors. We have a lot of seniors who are living on very limited incomes, some of them only on Social Security. And for them to spend $200, $300, $400 to get taxes done is all of their refunds. So this is, this is a great benefit to especially our lower-income people in the community. So we're, all of us are proud to be able to serve. And I just, I do want to say that this shows the value of the effort that you have all put in in creating a recreation center that allows us to be there, because all of the community ends up at that center. And so they get the value from our taxes, but also from, for some of these people, that's their only communication during the year, to be able to sit with somebody and talk. I've had, I've had French-speaking counselors, and every year, they get two or three of their French-speaking people who own, that's the only people they've ever talked to in the whole year in France. So, you know, it's, it's a value, and so is your community, so, and your recreation center. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Jim. Thanks for your volunteer. Anyone else like to say a few words? Jean? Go ahead.
Madam Mayor, council members, thank you so much for the honor of your recognition. Those of us who volunteer are very grateful that the city of Millbury has been such a wonderful partner, enabling us to provide the services that we do. Year after year, the staff at the rec center, Hannah and her staff, provide amazing support. They help with the scheduling, they welcome the clients to our site. And this partnership is really exemplary. I don't think that without it, we could provide the services that we do. So we, AARP Foundation, would like to thank the city of Millbury for your continuing support, and we look forward to serving the members of our community going forward. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And just commend all of you. Tax time is certainly is a stressful time for a lot of folks, and your volunteerism and your work, you know, take a lot of stress away from many of our residents, like you said, on limited income, many of whom are seniors. And so with that, we thank you very much, and we're a grateful city because of you. Please join us. The Vice Mayor has your individual certificates. Okay, here we are. Item number two, the agenda overview and staff briefing. Would you please, City Manager Tom Williams?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Good evening to you, members of the city council. Tom Williams, City Manager. Just a quick bi-weekly update of what's happening. First and foremost, we were very excited to announce the completion of the Millbury Library Makerspace, the ribbon-cutting ceremony and grand opening a week ago Saturday on April 13th. The city of Millbury worked in partnership with San Mateo County Library and the Friends of the Millbury Library that raised over $100,000 for this project to convert a little over 800 square feet of an old computer room of an old computer room to the new library makerspace. It's, it's absolutely an incredible transition. We have a 3D printer, sewing machines, photography equipment, memory lab, digitization, robots, jewelry making. I mean, it is just a fantastic facility. And more than just kind of creating things for fun, it actually, I learned that there was a teacher at Taylor that had a, an issue with one of his shelves and could not find the part. And so he went to the library and looked it up online and was able to print out on the 3D printer the part that he needed for shelving in his classroom. So it's practical as well as a lot of fun. So I know the Vice Mayor's, our representative, probably will say stuff, you know, in, in more detail during the council comments, but just like to really thank the partnership with the library.
I think it's nearly $300,000 of donation from the Friends of Library.
I think you're right, correct? Yeah, over 300, right around 300,000.
Right.
Amazing. Next slide, please. Also, great news. As of April 12th, the Millbury Recreation Center is now fully powered by solar panels that were installed with our partnership with Peninsula Clean Energy. We'd really like to thank Peninsula Clean Energy, also known as PCE, for this outstanding partnership. Our photovoltaic system, it's enough energy to power 15 houses daily, about 11,000 square feet of PV area. And the whole recreation center was designed with this in mind to get to functional zero with, or net zero, I should say, on our solar power for the recreation center. So this project also supports, also supports the goals of our Climate Action Plan. So this is great news, and I know we'll be working on a ribbon-cutting here in the future on this, on this great project. Next slide. And then just real quick to bring the City Council and the community up to date on events. This Thursday at 8:00 AM, April 25th, we have the David J. Chacootie Memorial. We'll be hosting this in partnership with the San Mateo County Sheriff's Office and the Millbury Bureau. This is a memorial ceremony honoring Officer David J. Chacootie. This will take place in front of the Millbury Police Bureau here in front of City Hall. And as we honor Officer Chacootie, we'll lay flowers in the memorial and host a flag lowering ceremony. So that's 8:00 AM this Thursday morning out in front of the Police Bureau, out in front of City Hall location. Also, Saturday, April 27th, that's this Saturday, we celebrate Earth Day and Arbor Day. This is starting at 9:00 AM. This will be along the Spur Trail. Just at the, at the skate park, just, just to the east of the skate park, we will be planting trees and, and maintaining the area. So we'll provide the supplies to all participants for the tree planting. We'll also offer a free lunch to all participants, so you can get a little lunch for your, for your efforts. It's a great time. A lot of schools are represented with kids, and a lot of the youth organizations attend this meeting. So again, this Saturday, April 27th, at the Spur Trail, at the skate park, starting at 9:00 AM. Also, Saturday, May 4th, a week later, we have our compost giveaway at 9:00 AM. This starts at 9:00 AM, ends at 12:00 PM. This again is along the Spur Trail between Palm Avenue and Elder Avenue. The Spur Trail is on Millbury Avenue, between Millbury Avenue and, and the Mills High School. So people can come and pick up free compost for all their gardening needs. So you can bring your own shovels and containers. We supply the compost. Saturday, May 11th, is the Millbury Bike Rodeo. This starts at 10:00 AM and will go to 3:00 PM. This is located in partnership with the school district and the Millbury Sheriff's Bureau. This will take place at Taylor Middle School on the blacktop where the, where the basketball courts are located. They'll also be in, in partnership with the California Highway Patrol, helmet giveaway, free helmets for youth. And I think we have right around 250 or 300 helmets to give away this year. So again, Saturday, May 11th, 10:00 AM, Taylor Middle School, our bicycle rodeo. And then lastly, May 17th, which is Saturday, and May 18th, which is Sunday, we have our Millbury Arts and Crafts Show. This is hosted by the Cultural Arts Advisory Committee, and participants can log on to the City of Millbury's website for information on how to participate and get, get their art displayed through our Arts Committee. And that will be Friday, May 17th, from 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM, and then Saturday, May 18th, from 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM. I said Saturday and Sunday dinner. It's actually Friday and Saturday. So again, Friday, May 17th, Saturday, May 18th, you can get information from our website on how to enter art pieces for the show. So Mayor, that was a brief overview of what's happening, and that concludes my presentation.
Thank you so very much. We got a busy May coming up. And do we have any report out from the April 23rd closed session from legal?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. There's no reportable action from the closed session.
Okay, thank you so very much. So next up is the approval of minutes. We have a regular meeting minutes on January 23rd, 2024, and also a regular meeting minutes in February 13, 2024. Any council comments or questions? Oh, okay. Councilmember Schneider?
Actually, Mayor, it was for the City Manager update that if anybody has old scooters or bicycles, we're having a scooter-bicycle swap on May 11th. So bring those things and get them to a new owner.
Excellent. Thank you for the update there. All right. Any other questions, comments on the two meeting minutes? Would they entertain a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve from Councilmember Schneider, and a second from Mr. Vice Mayor. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Schneider?
Aye.
Councilmember Pappan?
Yes.
Councilmember Cahalan?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Goodman?
Aye.
Mayor Fong?
Aye.
The two sets of minutes passed by a vote of 5-0.
Thank you so very much. Moving along, item number four is the oral report from City Committees and Commission Chair. Today, we have the adoption of fiscal year 2024 to '25 from Parks and Rec Commission Work Plan. City Manager, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to introduce the Park and Recreation Commissioner Chair, Mr. John Kiefer, who will be presenting the annual work plan for the Park and Recreation Commission.
Excellent. Commissioner Kiefer, please join us.
Counselor Mayor, I believe this would be considered an action item, that you'll be voting on this, so. I'm John Kiefer. I'm with the, I'm the Chair of the Park and Recreation Commission. And I'll introduce you to some of the members of our Park and Recreation Commission. Obviously, Steve Henderson, my Vice Chair, Stephanie Douglas, Marion Kong, and Jordan Miranda. This is just a review of our fiscal year 2023, 2024, things that we have accomplished. We have participated in meetings for Bayside Manor and Marina Vista Park, our new parks that are hopefully going out to bid very soon so we can strike dirt. There was a lot of community involvement, a lot of, a lot of gathering of data and input for these parks. Made recommendations to the City Council on Bayside Manor and Marina Vista projects. Some of those were like ADA access and fulfillment of people of all abilities with the equipment in those parks, and we came back up with those. Continued participation in Bike and Pedestrian Advisory Committee. And we will have a booth at the Bike and, at the Bike Rodeo on May 11th. And I believe we have two bicycles that are going to be raffled off, possibly three. So add that to the information on that. We've supported and expanded in additional programs, rentals, and more that were established at the new Millbury Recreation Center. I think that's supported staff, right? And expanded in additional programs. We attended the San Mateo County Parks and Recreation Commissioner Workshop, and that's to share, exchange, take in new best practices of other recreation departments throughout San Mateo County. It's our work plan. Task number one, broad scope, and this is pretty much our vision statement, that we are an advisory body to the City Council. We need to have the latitude, because council needs the latitude to evaluate different things that may arise throughout the course of our year regarding Parks and Recreation and our BIPAC. So some of our tasks may seem rather broad and general, not very specific, but that's because council's job isn't always very specific and itemized. So we, as an ongoing activity, serve as the recommending body for matters as defined in the municipal code, and we keep abreast of current and emerging, emerging issues in Parks and Recreation. That's how we, things that we do by attending workshops like that with the San Mateo County, other cities. Task number two, advisory body for active transportation plan is an ongoing activity. Service as a recommending body surrounding matters dealing with bike and pedestrian safety on the Bike and Pedestrian Advisory Committee. Capital Improvement Program recommendations, right now, we are really focused on, and as we have in the past, Spur Trail connectivity, regional connectivity. And we're always looking at ways to tighten that up, provide crossings, and get grants to do that. Task number three, this is a, this is quite a monumental task. It's been before us a couple of times, but programs and fees. We annually review recreation programs and fees, and those fees may involve not only residents, it's a tiered system. It's residents of Millbury, it's people outside of Millbury, it's for-profit, it's nonprofits. A lot of work does go into that. If any, Parks and Recreation Commission will make recommendations to the City Council regarding programming fees, service fees, developer impact fees, rental fees. And let's see, developing it. And on request by council and our staff, or as the commission deems appropriate, we conduct an evaluation of Parks and Recreation programs and fees by consideration and recommendation to the City Council. Task number four, review of Capital Improvement Plan, or SIP. Continually review and make recommendations to the City Council regarding SIP for Parks and Recreation facilities. Right now, before us, some of the recommendations we would like, when you approve this, we can move forward on these things, some multi-year products. One of them is to develop a Parks and Facilities Master Plan. This is something we really need. We've done a Parks Inventory. You may be familiar with that, that's been in front of you before. And we would like a full master plan for that. Mills Estate Park, and that's obviously, Mayor Fong, you know, we're exactly what I'm talking about, that park. We would love to have that developed and that refurbished and enhanced, and make that a really, a truly nice neighborhood park. A Dog Park, which is going to take us to identify a location and a design that's going to be compatible with the needs of the city. And Central Park, a pathway explorer, exploring the idea of lights along those pathways. It's not just a park, it's also a thoroughfare. You have a lot of people that are going downtown, and they live out in the apartment buildings. And if you're out there, you'll see people coming by, especially when the, you know, the seasonal changes. You'll see people coming by at 5:00 in the dark stumbling along paths because they've gone shopping downtown. They need to get back to their residence. So we would like to see, explore an idea for lights along that pathway. Task number five, support and community enrichment. We provide support for prioritizing our use of our limited park space and our field usage. One of those things that we have a subcommittee for our field user plan, and we are involved in that. We're always looking for enhancements of continued cities' events, parks, playgrounds, and other recreation programs and facilities. And two of the things that are also in our work plan are review and support the Marina Vista Park Project, help the Recreation Department to plan the ribbon-cutting of the new park. We're going to have Youth Advisory Committee, that's an idea before us, and involve them in that, too. Requesting a minimum of a $500 budget for each one of those parks. Minimum $500. If you want to chip in a little bit more, we're welcome, welcome the money. And task number seven, review and support the Bayside Manor Park Project. Same thing, it's going to be a ribbon-cutting ceremony. We'll have the youth out there helping us. Along with, not just out there, but part of the planning process, which is going to be, I think, pretty neat. Be involved in that. And staff does recommend that the City Council approve our plan. We've put a lot of thought into it. It went back and forth, there were a lot of ideas exchanged and some debate, and I think we've come up with a very good plan for the upcoming year. Thank you very much for your time.
Excellent. Yeah, excellent. Thank you so very much, Chair. Any questions or comment from the council?
Yes.
Councilmember Pappan?
Thank you. I can tell a lot of work went into that. So I think, thank you for issues related to pickleball, because I know that's an ongoing issue. I'm not, I might have missed it in the, might have missed it in the plan, but appreciate your working with the city and all the residents.
You're very welcome, and that would be item number one. Like I said, that flexibility of things that do arise that we need to be involved in.
Thank you.
Okay. We got Councilmember Schneider, and then after that, we'll go to Councilmember Cahalan. Councilmember Schneider?
Thank you, Mayor. Great presentation. Question, and I was going to bring this up under the capital improvement, but I may not make it that late. At Palm Avenue, there are two narrow paths that lead from the sidewalk on Palm Avenue up to the top of the hill in Central Park, and they're really decrepit. I know we tend to do those projects when we've got leftover asphalt, but if there's a way to look at that, if you're using a cane or a walker or a wheelchair, you, you cannot use that trail. So great that you're thinking of lights, but if you could look at that pathway, too, the two pathways leading down. And number two, thank you to staff for the new baffles in the great room. Movie night was there, what, two weeks ago? It was a full house. It was really lovely. So congratulations, staff, for getting those installed. Thank you.
And I will add about that path, that we do have the community gardens right by that path, just as an additional thought about that.
And a lot of people carry their picnic goods up there to use the picnic tables at the top of the hill. So to me, it's a trip and fall hazard.
Okay. All right. Thank you for the comment. Ms. Cahalan?
Thank you so much. Wonderful presentation. I have the honor of being the liaison to the Park and Rec Commission, so I got to see how much work you all put into this. And as I was preparing for this meeting and reading our CIP budget planning, if any of y'all got to peek at that ahead of time, you'll see that many of those recommendations that you have in the CIP number four actually are in the budget this year. So you'll have a very busy and fruitful meetings and projects this year.
Fantastic. We're very happy to hear that. Thank you.
Of course. Ms. Pappan, one more time.
Sorry, I forgot one thing here. In an effort to expand our services, we had a meeting recently with the high school superintendent trying to get access to the facilities we all pay taxes on, their tennis courts, all the different areas here. So it's a work in progress. Supposedly, they're supposed to be unlocked. They are not unlocked yet, but we're still working on that effort. Because again, I mean, they're beautiful. They've all been redone, and I don't see why residents and the community cannot access them. So hopefully, we're working with you all and the high school district, we can expand the horizons for athletic activities. Thank you.
That would be great, and that could possibly, potentially be another location for pickleball. Be able to explore that.
All right. Excellent. So just one little comment, perhaps this is more of a discussion for the council. You mentioned Dog Park and tried to identify the location for that. I was actually more hopeful that if the council would agree to come up with a, a strategy where we can more distributed implementation, where every park could have a pet element to it. I'm under the impression or believe that all of us would like to recreate close to where we are.
Right.
Especially those with house pets, whether it's dogs or cats, and even some exotic ones, that rather than going to a particular park destined for pets and dogs, perhaps it might be valuable to have a little bit of element of, for your pets, in every park that we have. I'm wondering if this is something that the council would consider as a sensible I'm wondering if this is something that the council would consider as a sensible approach, so that the dogs and parks...
You'll have your discussion about that, but I think that's a fantastic idea, and especially parks where we have, or spur trail even, careful where we put it on the spur trail, we don't want to have any conflicts, but there might be some areas along the spur trail we might want to examine too.
Yeah. So I thought that would be a sensible approach, but obviously, I'll leave it up to the council to have discussion. We have a hands up from councilmember Schneider.
Mayor, given where I live, on Palm Avenue, a few houses down from Central Park, we get people at our parks from Burlingame to Daly City, they definitely like the spur trail, and they like the feel of Millbrae. The problem with having a dog park everywhere is what people really want is to take their dog off leash and run, and that becomes interaction zones on that. So it would have to be a closed off section in every park. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Cahalan, do you have a comment?
I was just going to say, maybe we could look at integrating the components of the dog park with the park master plan and make it one cohesive piece, or one cohesive project.
Right.
Okay.
I agree. I concur, I think it's a tremendous idea. I think obviously more study is needed, making sure that they're the right sizing and the right area. If we have, you know, parks that maybe we can spread out to make them larger, the spaces for the dogs to be able to have more space to run around, I think that's important. It may not have to be at every specific park, but maybe in close proximity to the different districts that we have here.
Yeah. I just thought, you know, somewhat of a...
That does make sense, I like the idea.
Yeah. Somewhat more distributed effort, so that if not every park, you know, more than one park have these elements, so that, you know, I suppose we have a lot of residents who do have dogs and cats, and they certainly would like to take them on their daily exercise. Councilmember Papen.
Being one of those dog owners. So I don't know if we're counting the teeny weeny little dog park over at Burt Station, so that should be included in your plan, anyway. And then two, we have authority, which I am not giving up, from the S F P U C to use the property between Green Hills Park and the Mormon Cathedral or church there, as a dog park. It was voted on years ago, there is actually a plan, so instead of recreating the wheel, I hope that any future plans will include that, will deal with the political aspect of it, but...
Yes, thank you.
It's a beautiful piece of land, and it was voted on by their board, so individuals can't overturn a board vote. But again, the plan was done up by Ms. Price, and it's really beautiful, so hopefully we can get somewhere along those lines, that would be great.
And we also had a plan for Meadows Park, that we just faced a lot of opposition at the time from, but there was a really good plan that is out there, hopefully.
Yeah. Hopefully we'll open up minds as well. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you. We have a hands up from councilmember Schneider. Do you still have comments? Okay, we're good. Thank you. Thank you so very much. Oh, I think it's an action, we'll entertain...
Move approval?
We have a, okay, we have a motion and a second. City clerk, please.
Councilmember Papen?
Yes.
Councilmember Schneider?
Aye.
Councilmember Cahalan?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Goodman?
Aye.
Mayor Fong?
Aye.
The fiscal year 2425 Parks and Recreation Commission work plan passed by a vote of five to zero.
Thank you. And then next up, we have the adoptions of fiscal year 2024 to 25 Cultural Arts Advisory Committee work plan. City manager, please.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to introduce, and I'm really pleased to introduce, Mr. John Hippley, who is the Cultural Arts Advisory Committee Vice Chair, who will be presenting their work plan this evening.
Thanks for joining us, John. The third John to take the podium today.
Ready. Well, I want to say thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak for the Millbrae Cultural Arts Advisory Committee, and we have a lot going on. But before I begin, I'd like to have a shout out to the people who support us. Anna, for all they support the recreation department provides, Jeffrey Gabriel, who is our direct liaison, and then also Vice Mayor Goodman, who is our liaison from the city council. And they help us all to work together in terms of doing a, making Millbrae a better place to live. I guess that's what the ultimate goal of the plan is. So looking at the members, myself, I know in the initial slide, it said Vice Chair, and, excuse me, it said Chair, and this one says Vice Chair, and I think there's a process working out that I will become the chair, and that leads me to our previous chair, Amy Larr, who was a real driver in the arts community, and I really appreciated the amount of effort that she put in. She has since moved to San Francisco, so I have assumed the, either the Vice Chair or chairmanship of the committee. Next, we have Nicole Germain. You might have seen the article in the Chronicle with her hand up in the air in terms of the library and how they need more support staff and security personnel in terms of the problems they're having in San Francisco. But that hand in the air motion that Nicole has, she's a real spark plug. We also have Zululu and Cecilia Perez. Cecilia Perez is a true artist. She's the one who designed our poster for the upcoming art show, and she also did the poster for the Dia de los Muertos, and so I just have total admiration for her artistic skills. Also, we have Jessica as an alternate, Jessica Sina, and I guess she's been waiting to become a regular member of the committee, and so I know that Elaine, you're probably working on that. Yeah. So, next slide, please. All right. What happened in the past year? We had the Millbrae Art Show on March 19th and 20th, and it says 100 plus, but I counted 150. Of course, I tend to overestimate on many things, but we had quite a few people there. There was music provided, there was the awards ceremony, everyone seemed to have a really good time, and many people came back on the Saturday after it to look at the artwork again. And also, a shout out to the quilters and the ladies who are responsible for crafts over in the Recreation Center, they, a lot of their work sold, the quilts were just fantastic. Next, the Dia de los Muertos community event was well attended, as it says here, over 400 people were at that particular celebration. A shout out to Gina Miranda, in terms of the amount of work that she put into it, and it really made for a great, great evening. The folk dancers, the Latina folk dancers from Mills High School put on a fantastic show, and everyone just came out of there with a really good feeling. So it was a, and also, the Leos from the Lions Club, they did some face painting and sugar skulls and all kinds of things like that. So it was a really community involvement activity. And from that activity, we, Amy Larr came up with the idea of a community art gallery. And so currently, Matt Christiansen, who is the art teacher at Mills High School, his work is being displayed because he was voted number one at the previous art show, and we're going to be working, and I'll get to that, on a new rotation schedule for the art gallery. But again, you can see the work here, as far as Cecilia, it's really, I mean, there is an artist for you. Okay, next slide, please. Our 2024-2025 work plan, we are an advisory committee. Sometimes we'd like to be more than that, but we know our place, so we do advise the city council in terms of things that we would like to do. Task two, plan to implement the Millbrae Arts and Crafts Show this year. We are going to continue with our theme, we are Millbrae, and we're family, and so we're going to be including the crafts, in addition to the quilts and the other crafts from the knitters. We are going to be encouraging people to bring in their own crafts, which will be judged. Task three, curating rotating art gallery. This is one that we've had a great deal of discussion over, because it doesn't necessarily have to be the winner of the art show. It could be maybe community residents who want to have their work displayed, that is a distinct possibility, and so we're still really exploring that, and we need to do more discussion and involve with it. The Broadway Bulletin Board remodel project, the bulletin board, although we, we're not really sure, I guess the Recreation Department has a certain amount of control, but so does the Chamber of Commerce, and so there seems to be going back and forth, but it definitely needs to be remodeled. Also, in regard to that bulletin board, what we would like to see is a rotation, maybe even a monthly rotation, whereby you have artwork from the elementary schools, and so each month, we feature an elementary school and the artists work there. There is all kinds of possibilities in terms of just citizens getting involved, you know, Millbrae residents who want to have their artwork. So we are again looking toward the possibilities there. Next slide, please. Dia de los Muertos, great, great draw in terms of the dancing, and, you know, some people said, well, Dia de los Muertos, that should be more of a reverent type of event, it may be calming, but on the other hand, the spirit of it was that, yes, we honor the dead, but we also honor the living, and the living want to celebrate, and in celebrating, we believe it makes the dead happy, our forebears. So we're working on things that will enliven the ceremony and make it even more relevant, and who knows, maybe this year we might have 500 people. Task six, Legacy Tile Project. Nicole Germain was going to be here, but unfortunately, she was involved with union activities, so she will not be joining us, but her idea is to have memorial tiles, gratitude tile painting workshop, and have those tiles affixed to the surfaces near the library. But unfortunately, there's a curvature to some of the planners, and so we have to work out those details. We definitely want to keep that project for the upcoming year. Task seven, the Juneteenth Celebration. I know Vice Mayor Goodman is very much involved with that, and our role is basically advisory, but we will help you as much as we can, Vice Mayor. Next slide, please. So the staff recommends that the city council approve the Cultural Arts Advisory Committee fiscal year 2024-2025 work plan, and we're looking forward to working very closely with the city council. Thank you.
Thank you so very much, Mr. Hippley. We have a hands up from councilmember Schneider.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Hippley, and good luck as our new chair. Just a correction on the bulletin board. Yes, it had been perceived that it was chamber, but really, that was during hard times previous decades ago. The bulletin board is entirely the city's, and it's great that you guys want to work on it. Millbrae Community Enhancement Advisory Committee also would like to get some information up there, because they have a series of environmental training classes coming up. So Santana is the lead for that. I'll put the two of you together.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you, councilmember Schneider. And councilmember Papen.
Thank you. The bulletin board seems to be very popular, but we have always thought, to some of us, keeping the community informed, it'd be really nice if it was an electric message board of some kind, and maybe can incorporate everybody's, the art and all kinds of things here, but it's always difficult communicating with the public, and hopefully, sometime in the future, we can really make it a very diverse and updated bulletin board, so people going down the main street will not only get information, but also enjoy all the cultural aspects of Millbrae. So hopefully, we'll keep the door open for all possibilities. Thank you.
I think a reader board would be an excellent augmentation to what we already have, yes.
Still trying to get one outside City Hall, too. Thanks.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Ms. Schneider, you still have your hands up?
I just wanted to say that that electronic display board in front of City Hall was in our goals prior to COVID, but with the budget constraints from COVID, it was removed, so that's something to consider for that. There's so many purposes that that electronic bulletin board could be used for, including disaster prep, et cetera. It's just a very important thing.
Okay. Thank you for the comment. Any other common questions from the council? This is an action item, we'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
We have a motion from Mr. Vice Mayor?
Second.
We have a second from councilmember Cahalan. No further comment? If no further comment, city clerk.
Councilmember Schneider?
Aye.
Councilmember Papen?
Yes.
Councilmember Cahalan?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Goodman?
Aye.
Mayor Fong?
Aye.
The city council adopted fiscal year 2425 Cultural Arts Advisory Committee work plan by the vote of five to zero.
Thank you so much, and congratulations, Mr. Hippley. All right. So next up, we have public communication. This portion of the agenda is reserved for those who wish to comment on items not appearing on tonight's agenda. However, the speakers are expected to address subject matter within the jurisdictions of the city council. Every speaker will have three minutes, and the speaker is to address directly to the entire council and not individual council members nor the public. We will begin with in-person speakers and then followed by speakers online. All right. We have the first speaker for the night, Mon Carol Wang. Thank you, Ms. Wang.
Thank you. Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Mon Carol Wang. I attended Millbrae's Public Schools, Meadows, Taylor &amp; Mills, and I lived in District Three before going off to law school. Several weeks ago, in my personal capacity, I assisted my parents and 16 of their neighbors. This is a diverse group of 17 neighbors with this portion of Helen Drive sitting and voting Districts One, Three, and Four. Six of these families have lived in this neighborhood for over 30 years. Simon, Rhonda, Peter, Maureen, among others, joined me today in the audience. And during this time, two major issues have regularly negatively impacted both their safety and well-being. The first being faulty storm drains, the second being insufficient traffic control. We ask that the city remedy these issues immediately. Zooming in on the first issue, over the last four winters, they have experienced significant flooding of their homes due to failures in the storm drain infrastructure. Please see the letter that we sent you and the Millbrae Public Works Department in late March for photos and videos of the destruction. You should have a copy in front of you today. It's the Public Works Department's responsibility, per its website, to maintain and improve the city's storm drain infrastructure, but they have neglected this duty. We have documented four specific instances of flooding. Sediment accumulates, the clogs drain, and water collects. Each car zooming by causes powerful waves to wash into all of their garages. The floods ruin car engines, destroy priceless family heirlooms, and honestly creates a big muddy mess. We remind you that during the December 2021 storm, similar flooding in another part of Millbrae took two lives. We don't want Millbrae to be known as the city of deaths by flooding. The second issue is a lack of traffic control along Helen Drive. Currently, there's no stop sign nor crosswalk along Helen Drive between Geraldine Drive and Laurel Avenue. Again, quoting from the Public Works website, "It is the department's responsibility to maintain streets, traffic signs, and provide safe and clean public rights of way." Well, due to their location at the bottom of the hill, cars drive by at fast speeds, which isn't safe. The speed makes it unreasonably difficult for them to exit their driveways, and even their cars parked innocently in front of their homes face challenges. Peter and Maureen's family car parked in front of their home has been hit not once, but twice by speeding vehicles. Moreover, no crosswalk invites jaywalking, certainly problematic in a neighborhood where students of Green Hills Elementary School and Taylor Middle School reside. students of Green Hills Elementary School and Taylor Middle School reside. I know that the city prioritizes public safety. Thirteen years ago, in 2011, my childhood friend was struck at the intersection of Nita Drive and Laurel Avenue. At that time, it was not a four-way intersection. Inspired to take action, 15-year-old me stood at this very chamber in front of this very podium advocating for more stop signs. Your predecessors on the city council took my call seriously.
Ms. Wang, thank you.
Yes.
Yes, we do have your comment in written format and we will investigate them. Thank you very much. And I assure you that our DBW department is very keen on your issue. This is not a comment segment. I just want to assure you, as you said, public safety is high on our priority and we will look into all of that between traffic calming and storm clearance. Make sure all the storm drains are working in top-notch condition so that, you know, public safety is being addressed. Thank you, Ms. Wang.
Thank you so much.
So Mayor, this is not on the agenda, so we can't spit. I just wanted to make a public announcement that Public Works has set up a meeting with the neighborhood. What is the date?
Mr. Batista.
Just for information so people know the date of the neighborhood meeting.
Perfect. Thank you. Mr. Batista.
Mayor, we have reached out to the residents who had signed this letter and we have a meeting set with them on May 9th at 6:00 PM at the Millbrae Recreation Center.
Thank you very much. All right.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Schneider.
Per City Clerk, I need to announce that I need to step away at 8:15 PM.
Okay, got it.
Thank you.
Thank you. So second speaker, we have John Manfera, followed by Ed Musa.
Good evening, council members, members of the public. We, the constituents and voters of Millbrae, come together to address recent events, including the last city council meeting, that have stressed concerns, that stirred concerns within the community. The mayor's remarks expressing surprise at this civility displayed within a community were unexpected and disconcerning, with underlying tones of submineral racism. These comments, these comments raise question about assumptions this council has about its Palestinian, Arab, Muslim and Christian community and whether there is an implicit suggestion of incivility based on race and religion. We do not think the mayor had ill intent, but the comments that you were, the comments made were surprised as how civil it was means that your inherent expected our community to be uncivil. The community has been nothing of the sort, even at our community rally a month ago, or month or two ago. Our community allows exhibit peace, fairness, justice, and your comments may painfully incited others. We ask for an apology from you so we can move past this together. Councilmember Pappin's several inflammatory remarks are lacking fiscal bias. We believe that Councilmember Pappin purposely made these comments in to manufacture and exploit any tensions within the community by triggering a reaction. As elected officials, in this incumbent upon, it is incumbent upon you to exercise restraint, fairness and responsibility when addressing humanitarian issues that deeply affect our community's, community members. We ask for an apology for putting down a community that has been through so much. Personal motivations and impartiality should be left at the door when addressing community members personally affected by humanitarian crisis. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. Mr. Ed Musa, followed by Maureen Lum.
Thank you, Mayor, council. The overwhelming and unprecedented presence of 10 sheriff deputies at a council meeting is deeply concerning and perceived as intimidation rather than ensuring public safety. Intimidation has no place in the public marketplace of ideas and it is essential to foster an environment where all community members feel safe and empowered to express their opinions freely. Perhaps most importantly, we are disappointed by the council's decision to pass the buck to the community instead of providing the leadership and guidance expected of elected officials. The council's decision at the last meeting was characterized by ambiguity, confusion, a lack of clear direction, and regarding timelines, overarching supervision and criteria for member selection. To date, nothing has materialized from the council's chaotic edit to the original motion and our community remains steadfast in asking that this council adopt a ceasefire resolution. It is crucial for our leaders to take proactive steps in addressing community concerns and working towards meaningful resolutions rather than shifting responsibility onto constituents. In conclusion, we call upon our elected officials to uphold the values of transparency, accountability, and justice in their actions and decisions. We stand ready to engage constructively in dialogue and collaboration to foster a stronger, more equitable community. Once again, we ask that you pass a ceasefire resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Musa. Maureen Lum, followed by Steve Rinaldi.
Hi, council member and mayor. So we live on Helen Drive between Laurel and Michael. So I'm here to talk about the flooding issue. So every year or every few years, our street gets flooded really badly and the water would come, you know, into the garage and then, so we have some financial damage. Last year, our garage door was jammed and we couldn't open it and it costs us like almost $200 to fix that. And then another year, our fence door was pushed open and then the latch broke. And then one year, I left my cellphone in the car underneath the seat and the water went into my car and my cellphone was ruined. So all these issues, you know, we have to deal with during the rainy season. And then the second issue is the speeding. The cars are coming down too fast, okay? There's no stop sign. I think the stop sign was like, I forgot, Trioga, you know, until like Magnolia, you know? So one time my dog was hit and injured and then twice my car, the side mirrors were broken. So all these issues, we hope that the mayor and the council members could help us residents with that. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Steve Rinaldi, followed by Mr. Ken Smith.
Thank you, Mayor Fong. City council, most importantly, Millbrae residents. I come before you tonight to discuss the Article 34 lawsuit that we have with San Mateo County and just thank those council members that have supported residents of Millbrae who are concerned about their California constitutional rights. It's very clear that San Mateo County broke those constitutional rights when they okayed County Executive Mike Calagie to move forward in his pursuit of acquiring the La Quinta. Attending the last court date on April 3rd, it became evident that the county themselves don't even know why they're purchasing that property. And I find it completely appalling when I read through their September 12th resolution that nowhere in there did I find that that property is going to be for seniors and families other than that it was just low-income housing, which Article 34 clearly states out, you need to put it to a local vote before you move forward with the project. Unfortunately, the county didn't do that. Also, during that lawsuit, the court date, April 3rd, it became very clear when the judge himself dispelled the myth that Article 34 is racist. It is not. So I thank every single council member that supports that lawsuit. And I want a second, a motion that was made at the last city council meeting by a on-and-off again Millbrae resident who wanted to know what the financials of the La Quinta were. I think it's very important that every Millbrae resident understand what the financial impact of the La Quinta will be. So I would like to advise the city council to draft up a letter to all the residents to explain the estimated three-quarters of a million dollar hit our city will take in lost revenue as a result of the La Quinta moving forward yearly. So with that being said, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Rinaldi. Ken Smith, followed by Ron Raquel.
Good morning, mayor and council members and residents of Millbrae. I just want to be, I have a recall conflict of interest and I just want to get on the public records that on April 15th, 2024, the citizens of Millbrae delivered a letter from our lawyer, Peter, and I'm going to spell the last name, B-A-G-A-T-E-L-O-S, to Tom Williams, our city manager. The lawyer represents our views with District Two and District Four council members and should have not vote on their special recall election date or the number of words used in their materials. I just wanted it on the public record that so for the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Okay, Mr. Ron Raquel, and then we'll follow by online speakers.
Good evening, city council members. Just talking about public safety, last year I circulated a petition of over 300 signatures to get Millbrae and Magnolia Avenue studied. Unfortunately, the time study or the study did not go to avail, but I've been almost hit 25 times in that intersection. I guess I have to be dead to get any progress in here. I've been hit numerous, almost hit numerous times on Magnolia. Public safety is of grave concern. I do not feel safe at all crossing anywhere in Millbrae. Mr. Andrews, you said that, you said that public safety is of your utmost concern. I don't know what else to do. I believe it's your due diligence to make sure every citizen should be able to cross, not feeling threatened crossing an intersection. It is common sense. It's an ADD society. The last time I saw, getting a license is a privilege, not a right. Unfortunately, nothing is getting done until someone dies. We will have the hollow words of thoughts and prayers, which will not help the family or anyone. I don't know what to say. I've been pretty quiet the last few meetings, but anywhere in Millbrae, you take your life into your hands. And once we get the projects going with the Muzi project and everything in Millbrae Avenue, et cetera, El Camino being downsized, it is going to be a very tenuous experience. It is an important, I know there are projects in the works, but it needs to be done ASAP because eventually someone is going to die and thoughts and prayers are not going to do anything. And I feel that my circulation of the petition was for naught. Over 300 people at that, signed that petition and it should have accounted for something. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Raquel. Yeah. And I believe our public work has looked into those issues and will continue to have discussions with you, Mr. Raquel, to further your, analyze the concerns you have and find solutions to them. City Clerk, with the online speaker, please.
The first speaker is A.B.A.F. And if you could please state your full name for the record. Thank you. A.B.A.F., if you could please accept unmute.
Maybe we can move on to the next one and then come back. Oh, okay. Got it.
Yes.
Hi, Mayor Fong, Vice Mayor Goodman and the council members. This is Niang Hua Chen, the president of the Millbrae Culture Committee, the 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization. I'm pleased to share a summary report on the recent survey conducted among Millbrae local merchants regarding the Lunar New Year Festival and the Mid-Autumn Festival. The purpose of this survey was to gather feedback and insights from our business community to better understand their perspectives and their preferences about this special events that MCC has organized since 2019. And this time, we distributed a total 97 forms and we had 34 forms returned. And then in those survey questions, the first, we found out that the most respondents expressed strong support for the Lunar New Year Festival and the Mid-Autumn Festival hosted by MCC. And the second, the respondents provided a moderate rating regarding the festival's impact on promoting their businesses on the festival day. About 50% of the respondents said that the festivals significantly helped their businesses. And thirdly, there is strong support among merchants for the idea of having a summer night market in the Millbrae downtown area in the future. This presents an opportunity to explore and potentially implement new cultural events that align with the preferences and the interests of the local business community. And fourth questions, we asked them about the preference of festival duration and the respondents provided varied feedback. Majority expressed a preference for a two-day festival and they were also preference for a one-day event or no specific preference. And then the one concern they brought in the response is about, the feedback is about the parking challenges and a few merchants highlighted parking as a problem on festival days. So they suggest us to ensure accessibility for visitors and the businesses during festivals and the special events. So in conclusion, the survey results demonstrates a positive sentiment among merchants regarding the Millbrae cultural festivals. We will continue to foster vibrant cultural scene while supporting our local businesses and enhancing community engagement. And thank you for your attention to this report and your support for MCC's effort to host this event.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Grace X. If you could please accept unmute.
Yes, hello. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, tonight I wanted to discuss two issues. First, the La Quinta lawsuit and expand a little bit on what Mr. Rinaldi was talking about, about the county not even knowing what they want to put on the land. I wasn't able to attend the court hearing on the matter, but I did look at County Board of Supervisors President Warren Solcom's Twitter feed where he's constantly bashing the city and the residents and actually name calls people in the city, which is extremely disrespectful for an entire group of city and to lump everybody together. In his Twitter feed, he talks about how Millbrae wants to deny housing for seniors and families and that was discussed by the county attorneys at the hearing. However, a NIMBY activist that works for one of the housing coalitions specifically stated that the county, looking at the sales agreement, it does not state what the project is for. That was one of their arguments of why the lawsuit was not ripe. So it's really disheartening to see a Board of Supervisors member, somebody like Mr. Solcom, who's been in politics for majority of his life, I think. for majority of his life, I think he was first elected to some position when I was probably a child, to misleading the public about this lawsuit and what it's really about, and to paint people of Milbury as being against seniors and families. That's completely not the case, as has been enumerated many times by many citizens, is they just want a clear definition of what this project will entail and want it in writing, and that hasn't been presented. And the county continually hides the ball and changes their arguments to manipulate the situation to get the biggest support behind them. And it would be nice, I know there's limitations on what you five can do as board members or as city council members with a lawsuit pending, but it really would be nice to see some transparency from the county and to acknowledge that maybe they didn't really think this thing through, and to stop calling Milbury residents and supporters of blocking this project racist, because it's really disheartening. Second, the issue I'd like to discuss is the ceasefire resolution, and I'm not sure if you know, but Congress, the House of Representatives declared that the statement "From the river to the sea, Palestine will be free" is hate speech.
Grace.
I must remember.
Grace, I think you're three minutes up. Thank you so much for your comment today. City clerk?
Next speaker is Zoom user. Please accept the mute and state your name for the record. Zoom user?
Yeah, hello, hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, hi, my name's Christina G. I'm very concerned about the city of Milbury's lawsuit regarding Article 34 against the county. In the event the city loses, I would encourage the city council to move forward with an appeal. On April 2nd, a bus full of concerned Milbury residents traveled to the San Mateo courthouse to support Milbury. A greater portion of Milbury residents feel deflated in their fight to discourage what the San Mateo County Board aggressively pushed onto this wonderful city. I recently watched six hours of our city council meetings and a Q and A on July 11th and August 18th of last year. The discrepancies that the county executive gives throughout those meetings is very frustrating. Article 34 seems the only way to be fair to the residents of Milbury. It's the only way for a city like Milbury to prove that residents are valued, and the county of San Mateo will be forced to stop pushing housing mandates with no real resolutions. And just the fact the county has almost unlimited amounts of money to spend, and they still allow our concerns to be dismissed is unacceptable. San Mateo County needs to prove that their plan works for the La Quinta, and it is benefiting both the unhoused and the residents of Milbury. Milbury is not some social experiment. We're real people who care. Finally, I'm asking of you, city council, to take Article 34 to the highest court so financially Milbury can survive. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Patricia Lamb. Please accept the mute.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello, oh, thank you. Honorable mayor and city councils, I want to say thank you, and I fully support you to continue the legal fight with the county on La Quinta. Based on the San Mateo County Supervisor's Resolution dated September 12, 2023, this property is to provide permanent rental housing to low-income county residents. So according to the California Constitution's Article 34, the local citizens have a right to vote on this public low-income housing. I encourage you to utilize all your means possible to ensure Milbury citizens have a vote on this. I understand this lawsuit is currently in court, and the outcome is yet to be determined. If we don't have the positive outcome, we, the local residents, are asking you to appeal the process. The amount of legal fees spent on this lawsuit is miniscule compared to the loss our city will endure indefinitely. $725,000 of our general funds per year indefinitely will be lost. Our city police fire 911 dispatch calls will increase in volume from the location. And more importantly, if one of our local residents is having a life-threatening emergency, this may increase the response time of our first responders. The city is asking us to vote yes on the fire assessment to maintain the effectiveness of our fire protection in emergency services. We, the residents, will be paying for the emergency services dispatch calls coming from the location, La Quinta, with our fire assessment payments. Again, if we do not have the positive outcome, please, we ask you to follow the heart of your constituents and appeal the process. Thank you for your time and concerns for our city.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Stella Lamb, or Stella L, excuse me.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Stella Lau. Good evening, mayor, vice mayor, and council members. I stand firmly with Milbury's lawsuit against San Mateo County to validate our voting rights. I urge the Milbury City Council to continue to utilize every legal avenue available to ensure that Milbury residents retain their voting rights under Article 34. It is critical that our voices are not only heard, but also valued and respected. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for your comment. I think that's all for the online speakers.
That's correct, mayor.
Okay, thank you so much. So that ends the public communication. Moving on to consent calendar, we have item number five, receive and file monthly general fund financial report for the period ending March 2024. And we have item six, adoption of a resolution accepting the 2023 Milbury Library Maker Space Project as complete, approving the revised total construction budget, and authorize the filing of a notice of completion. Item seven, adoption of a resolution authorizing the city manager or destiny to execute an agreement for the professional services with Townsend Public Affairs to provide grant writing services. Item eight, adoption of a resolution approving the acceptance of general fund, grant funds for the Bayside Manor Park renovation projects and Marina Vista Park renovation project. Item nine, reject by motion to 13 bids received for the Bayside Manor Park renovation project. Item 10, approve by motion to authorize the mayor to attend the Asian Pacific American Leadership Foundation's National Summit in Las Vegas. It, those are the six items on the consent calendar. Does anybody want to pull any item? Mr. Vice Mayor?
I'd like to pull item 10 at the request of a member of the public, just for a statement.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other items? Okay, do I have a motion from anyone?
No move.
Do we have a motion from Mr. Vice Mayor?
Second on all the remaining items.
Okay, we have a second from council member Pappan on five, six, seven, eight, and nine, correct? Okay, can we do a roll call, please?
Council member Snyder. Council member. Council member Kay Haley.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Goodman.
Aye.
Mayor Fang.
Aye.
The consent calendar of five, six, seven, eight, nine, passed by a vote of four to zero with council member Snyder excused.
Okay, thank you very much. Item 10, city manager, can we?
How do we open the discussion? Any questions that the council may have?
Okay. You have a question, Mr. Vice Mayor?
Yeah, there was a communication that we received as council to pull this item for a specific reason. I won't get into the reason other than that it calls into question the leadership of the organization and some questionable, questionable choice they made to uplift a particular individual. However, I would like to acknowledge that communication that we received, and I'd like to just make a statement on behalf of me, I guess, but to the council just regarding the organization. The organization was founded with the mission of engaging the AAPI community in active civic participation by creating, supporting, building, and strengthening the local community infrastructure to help prepare and train qualified AAPI leaders for public service. That is something that not only should we support, but we should also uplift. And I want to make sure that we're clear in acknowledging that and supporting our mayor and his attendance. But I also want to call out, you know, the concern that was brought to us that's reprehensible. But I think that holds in comparison to what the mayor's motivations behind attending this conference and what it will not just do for our mayor, but what I believe what it'll do for generations to come of those that look like him and see him as a motivation and something to strive for within our community. So with that said, I'd like to not just make a motion, but I also would like to call out to make sure that in the future, this is a way we should be uplifting our support and in continued education of our leaders to make sure that we're well-supported, well-informed, not just here locally, but throughout the state and the country. So when we have these items, for example, when I was requesting this, there was concern. And so I do want to make sure that we call out the development of our council to be able to have these conversations and encourage this type of leadership as we move forward. So thank you, and with that said, I'd like to make a motion if there aren't any other comments.
Thank you so very much, Mr. Vice Mayor. Council member Pappan, you have a comment?
Yes, and I'll second the motion too. If you'd be so kind to report out to the public when the convention or the appearance is done, that would be greatly appreciated.
Absolutely, happy to do so. In fact, I actually have prepared, just to explain to the benefit of the public, this is actually not the first time I attended the APLF conference. I've been attending since the beginning of 2021 after the COVID. It just so happened that every time they had it organized, they're within the state of California, and it's the first time they hold this conference outside of California. And so by virtue of our ordinance, I have to get authorization from the council in order to attend. In previous engagement of these conferences, I had the opportunity to discuss with many elected officials from the state and out of state, specifically the API legislative caucuses, where back in 2021, right out of COVID, I had an opportunity to meet with, you know, Assemblymember Ting, who was the chair of the Budget Committee at the time, and knowing right around that time, the self-help of the elderly was short on funding due to COVID. If you all still remember, they were providing about three days a week of lunch to our senior, and then they were at a bit of a financial difficulties. So a bunch of elected get together and then found ways to support it, the self-help of the elderly, right around that at the end of the COVID time, from the state's funding. Just so happened that Assemblymember Ting was the chair of the Budget Committee, so that was extremely helpful to help increase that program from three days to five days, not only in Milbury, but as well as in San Mateo. And then also last year, with the same group of elected that I've been meeting, along with Assemblymember Evan Low, we figured out a lot of ideas how to bring about more civic engagement to the ethnic community as well as the immigrant community. And the conclusion there was, we need to provide more language assistance and better serve our community from a more equity lens, looking at how we can serve our immigrant community better, and therefore bring about some strategy to be a more successful social equity program. And so with that said, been working with the library, which, so fortunately, we're able to bring forward a program where the citizenship class can be offered in more than English, in more than one language, as we continue to look for opportunities and resources to expand on the multilingual access throughout this region. So, you know, a lot of these efforts has been implemented and been impactful and bring about positive changes to our community. So I'm, you know, I'm looking forward to this upcoming conference. Hopefully, I can bring back even better ideas so that we can continue to get them implemented in the years ahead. And I want to thank all my colleagues for supporting this agenda item. Thank you so very much. So with that said, city clerk, if no further comment?
Council member Pappan.
Yes.
Council member Kay Haley.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Goodman.
Aye.
Mayor Fang.
Aye.
Consent item number 10, passed by a vote of four to zero with council member Snyder excused.
Thank you so very much. Moving on to public hearing, we have item number 11 today, which is a public hearing to consider the adoption of a resolution amending the downtown and El Camino Real specific plan and the Milbury zoning map to extend the commercial preference area overlay, remove the maximum floor area ratio within the overlay area, increase the permanent height limit for residential mixed-use projects within the overlay area to 100 feet, and related tax amendments and the adoptions of an ordinance making related revisions to the Milbury zoning map. Mr. City Manager?
Mr. Speaker, Ms. Mayor, I would like to introduce our Community Development Director, Mr. Andy Mogensen, for the staff presentation.
Director.
Good evening. So we have a hearing to consider a minor amendment to the El Camino Real specific plan as well as the zoning map. Ah, there we are, whoops, I went too far. Go back.
Use the keyboard.
There we are. All right. Little bit sensitive. So the downtown and El Camino Real specific plan was adopted on December 1st, 2022. This year in January, the city council discussed expanding opportunities for economic development, the retention of revenue generating land uses, and ways to encourage housing in the mixed-use zoning districts along the El Camino corridor, particularly the northern portion of the corridor. So they gave us that task to explore those potential improvements to the plan, and so staff has taken a look at the plan. We've come up with some minor amendments that are proposed tonight to encourage economic development and improve mixed-use residential opportunities along the northern portion of the corridor. We're also, the item before you this evening also helps retain revenue generating commercial land uses that face the El Camino Real corridor. They are prioritized in this minor amendment. And of course, as always, we're always looking for improvements and refinements to our development standards. It's a continuous process. We brought something forward to you back in March. We'll be coming to you regularly when we do see those improvements. As I like to describe it, it's a constant garden. We always have to keep our code and our plans up to date. So this is just part of that process. So just to give you a summary of what we've got tonight, what we're going to be talking about, the proposed changes would expand the commercial preference area overlay along the El Camino Real corridor in the specific plan and the zoning map to the northern part of the El Camino Real corridor. We're using that commercial preference overlay as the tool to implement these minor amendments. It removes the maximum floor area ratio in the overlay area. We've spoken with the developers in the past, and they've said that the floor area ratio, which is currently 2.5 FAR, can be a limit to what they can do with their properties. Removing that allows them a more buildable area, helps their projects pencil out. So it would remove it in that overlay area, which I'll show you on the map in just a moment. And then this would also increase the height limit for residential mixed-use projects in the overlay portion of the residential-focused mixed-use zoning, which is along the northern part of the El Camino Real corridor. It would increase that from 85 to 100 feet. So if you do that mixed-use residential, you could fit another story in there. And it does include provisions to retain street-level commercial uses along the El Camino Real corridor. And so we did that by amending the land use designations in the specific plan and a concurrent amendment to the zoning map to be consistent with the specific plan. And I'll show you what those maps look like. So as I mentioned, we're using this commercial preference area overlay as the tool. This is our existing land use map in the downtown El Camino specific plan. And so what we've done is we've used, we've piggybacked on that overlay, and we've expanded it in this area on the northern part of El Camino Real. And you can see in our proposal, we're moving that, we're adding that overlay to that northern portion in the graphic in front of you. And then concurrently, we're also doing the same with our zoning map, because the two have to be consistent. So we have the same overlay extension along the El Camino Real corridor also shown in the zoning map. And so what we do is we have a resolution tonight for you to amend the El Camino Real specific plan, and then an ordinance to amend the zoning map. You can see that location of that addition to the zoning map, that overlay being extended over the residential-focused mixed-use in the graphic in front of you. So as I said, this would allow mixed-use residential development to be constructed in that RFMU zoning, that's the orange. in that RFMU zoning, that's the orange zone, up to 100 feet. It's currently 85. Remove that 2.5 floor area ratio along the El Camino Real corridor within the overlay. We also have updates, updated text within the plan to reflect those changes, clarifying text. And, you know, one of the interesting things about these minor changes is that we didn't actually delete any text. Usually when I do a specific plan update, I have to delete something or strike out something, but this is one of those rare cases where we didn't do that. So we just inserted new text. So that's why you don't see any red line strikeouts. Everything's just red that's added. So it was a very elegant change. Sorry, I'm planner geek. So as I said, we also have related tables that we updated in the specific plan. We want everything to be consistent, making sure that when our developers are referencing those documents for advice and they're looking things up, that they can find them, everything's consistent. So we have updated our tables and figures to reflect the change. So we held a number of meetings on the topic. The Planning Commission met to review the proposed changes at their February 21st meeting. They approved a resolution recommending city council approval. These changes were also reviewed by both the Airport Land Use Commission and the CCAG Board of Directors, because anytime we modify our specific plan or general plan documents, we have to bring those before the Airport Land Use Commission for review. And in both cases, they found them to be consistent with the SFO Airport Land Use Plan, which is great. We also conducted tribal consultation under Senate Bill 18 as required by state law. We sent out notices to tribal agencies having traditional lands identified within the vicinity of the city. We notified them of the proposal and offered them an opportunity to consult. We did not receive any notice responses from that notification process. We also conducted environmental review on the mayor amendments. We found them to be consistent with the existing environmental impact report that was adopted in 2022. We found that these are minor changes, no substantial changes, no significant environmental effects, nor would these result in a substantial increase in any previously identified effects under the existing environmental impact report. And on top of that, any future individual projects that come in under these new provisions would also be subject to individual review under the California Environmental Quality Act. So any project that comes in, it's still going to be reviewed on a case-by-case basis. So with that, we recommend that the council tonight adopt a resolution to amend the downtown and El Camino Real specific plan to extend this commercial preference area overlay to include the corridor mixed-use zone parcels identified therein, and the changes that I discussed, removing FAR maximums, increasing the height for mixed-use residential and RFMU parcels. And also, second action that the council will be doing separately, we also recommend that you waive the first reading and introduce an ordinance to amend the Millbrae zoning map to also show that expanded commercial preference overlay. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you have this evening.
Okay. Thank you for bringing this forward and also bringing it through the Airport Land Use and the entire CCAT board. Councilmember Pappin.
Thank you for, as you put it, the elegant plan. Greatly appreciated. Just as a matter of helping developers as they come into town and directing them in the right direction, we are very interested in enhancing public transportation. So I think we've mentioned previously, if they can enhance bus stops along El Camino, making them more elegant at their cost and not CM Trans cost, that would be, if it's not in the plan, I hope we can encourage that to be put in the plan. And then additionally, I think I've mentioned this before, and you'll have to clarify for me if this is the place or the time, that we pursue further amendments to the Airport Land Use to include childcare. I know it's somehow prohibited, but we have all these major developments going on, and it just seems unreasonable to have all these employees coming to town and them not adding to the childcare resources. I don't know how we go about that, but I would like to see that somehow. If you could explain offline how we would pursue that, we can bring it before the council to see if we have consensus, but I think it's our obligation here to help because of the lack of affordability around here. Anything we can do would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
I actually have an idea on that, Councilmember Pappin, if you don't mind. I think as we discussed, the local density bonus program that we are actually currently working on throughout the downtown, specifically Broadway and El Camino Real, on some of the component where we have some upstairs flexible office space that could potentially be used for childcare and educational purposes, that is close to the core of our downtown. Those, we're anticipating certainly a few thousand brand-new, high-paying jobs coming into our life science campuses, and having these educational and childcare facility opportunities available being in our core downtown would certainly be beneficial. And so I think those could be part of the, could be something that we fold into the density bonus program as we move forward. Whereas this particular overlay may not necessarily be geared towards solving that problem, but I think there are solutions to that, if that makes sense.
That would be great, enhancing families as much as we possibly can. And two, when we go down that path, I think we should be talking to Burlingame as well, since they're going to be opening development on Rollins Road, which is right next door, and that would also infringe on the Airport Land Use. So if we could have some consistency, that would be great. Thank you so much.
Excellent. Mr. Vice Mayor.
Yeah, just as a former early childhood educator, there needs to be space. There needs to be indoor/outdoor space. So keep that in mind, and it can't just be enclosed stairs or something. We're going to make sure, we have to make sure that there's ample space for licensing.
Perfect. Yeah, that's a good point as well, the outdoor space, open space. It's certainly a consideration, perhaps, just thinking out loud here, but I would imagine some of those density bonus programs will specify a certain amount of open space requirement whereby it could be met through, I don't know if it makes sense, to do roof decking, where some of those things could happen.
Yeah.
But I'll leave it to you, planning professional, to come up with those ideas. But I think the roof decking could be a possibility to address these open space needs. Ms. Cahalan, do you have anything? You're good? Okay.
The only comment I'll say is for full disclosure, I live very close to this area where the updates are, but I don't think that calls for any, okay.
Legal? Okay, good to go. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other further comment, question? If not, we can entertain a motion.
Any public comment?
Yes.
Yeah, this is a public hearing. That's right. Open to public hearing, so I don't have any speaker slips. Do have anybody online?
Mayor, we do not have any speakers online.
Okay, so do we have a motion to close public comment, a public hearing?
Move to close the public hearing.
Okay, we have a motion to close, and we have a second on closing public hearing. Can we call a vote?
Councilmember Pappin.
Yes.
Councilmember Cahalan.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Goodman.
Aye.
Mayor Fong.
Aye.
The public comment, public hearing is closed.
Okay, all right. Bring it back to the council. Any further comments and questions for Director Mogensen?
Move approval.
We got a motion to approve, and we have a second from Mr. Vice Mayor.
We need to approve these separately.
Is it a single, is it a single motion or double motion?
So can I move approval and waive the second reading at the same time?
Resolution first.
Hey, move approval, the resolution.
Resolution.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the resolution. Do we have a second from Mr. Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Okay, we have a second from Mr. Vice Mayor to approve, to adopt the resolution amending the downtown and El Camino Real specific plan to extend the commercial preference area overlay to include a five corridor mixed-use zone parcel at the corner of El Camino Real and Center Street, and all residential focus mixed-use zone parcel along El Camino Real north of Medical Land Avenue, remove FAR maximums, and increase the maximum permanent height for RFMU parcels in the commercial preference area. City Clerk, I've done the job for you.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Pappin.
Yes.
Councilmember Cahalan.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Goodman.
Aye.
Mayor Fong.
Aye.
The public hearing resolution passed by a vote of four to zero with Councilmember Snyder excused.
Okay, another motion to waive the first reading. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion from Councilmember Cahalan, a second from Councilmember Pappin. City Clerk, please.
Councilmember Pappin.
Yes.
Councilmember Cahalan.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Goodman.
Aye.
Mayor Fong.
Aye.
Public hearing item ordinance passed by a vote of four to zero with Councilmember Snyder excused.
I want to thank the entire staff for bringing this project, this changes through, through the regional body, both, you know, the Airport Land Use Committee and the entire CCAT board. I think this is an important development for our city and to further enable our ability to better develop our downtown, especially the northern part of our city moving forward. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Moving on to existing business, item 12, approved by motion, the joint use agreement between Millbrae Elementary School District and the City of Millbrae for facilities and field use and athletic field maintenance. City Manager?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Brand. I'd like to introduce our Recreation Director, Ms. Hannah Moran, for the staff presentation.
Ms. Moran.
All right. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council members. This is the City of Millbrae and Millbrae Elementary School District Joint Use Agreement for Athletic Field Maintenance and Facility and Field Use. MESD, so the Millbrae Elementary School District does own fields in Millbrae. These fields are at Green Hills Elementary, Meadows, Lamita Park, Spring Valley, and of course, Taylor Middle School. So these are the MESD-owned fields. Go ahead, next slide. For background on this, the City of Millbrae has been maintaining, managing, and jointly using the athletic fields at the school sites under a license and field use agreement that was dated May 16th, 2008. The Millbrae Recreation Department has also used the MESD fields and facilities for the purposes of youth sports since an agreement dated August 1979. The Millbrae Recreation Department additionally started adult sports programs And for the joint use agreement, the City of Millbrae proposed to include athletic field maintenance and MESD facility use into one agreement. The facility use portion of the agreement includes use of the athletic fields and facilities for the purpose of youth and adult sports, youth summer camp, and related recreational programs and activities. The use of Taylor Middle School for Millbrae Recreation Department's in-house summer camp is new, and it will be vital as it will allow our camp to expand the number of registrations possible, which is very important for childcare during the summer months. And just to get into some of the dollars for this joint use agreement, the total cost of the maintenance of and the water usage of the athletic fields on the school sites is $704,756.24 annually. A study of the usage resulted in approximately one-third of the use, and therefore, one-third of the cost being allocated to the Millbrae School District, which totals to $232,885. And two-thirds of the cost still allocated to the city, which totals $471,871.24. Beginning on, per this agreement, beginning on September 19th, 2024, and thereafter, on each September 19th, the Millbrae Elementary School District agrees to pay the city an annual lump sum of $153,830.45. That is $110,000 toward maintenance and another $43,830.45 toward water. In addition to the lump sum payment, the district will grant to the city an annual credit for the use of district facilities at the school sites in the amount of $79,054.55. This is for the purpose of youth and adult sports, youth summer camp, and related recreational programs and activities. The credit will be used at the negotiated rates that has been set in this agreement, and we will talk about that in the next slide. The lump sum payment and the credit totals to $232,885 annually. And again, this is the approximate one-third annual cost of the maintenance and water usage to the city. Both parties have agreed that all costs and negotiated rates shall remain fixed during the term of this agreement. And these, this is just a slide to show the negotiated rates for facility usage. These rates are lower than the advertised rates by the school district for other users. So, and these rates, just to clarify, will work off of the credit from Millbrae Elementary School District to the City of Millbrae. So these rates will work off of that $79,000 credit. We will continue to run youth sports at $0 for their multipurpose rooms, their blacktops, the Shea Center, Taylor Middle School gym, and athletic fields at the school sites. But then for adult sports and other usage, we could use the classrooms for $10 per hour, and the Shea Center and the gym at Taylor Middle School for $77 an hour. This will allow some of our adult sports programs to return, including basketball, which is very popular. For summer camp, as I mentioned earlier, this is great because this will allow our in-house summer camp to expand. Again, our maximum offering last year would have been 60. We are increasing the maximum offering to 84 registrations, and in future years, that number will only go up based on this agreement. And the classrooms for that will be $10 an hour. The gym and the auditorium or the Shea, depending on which one we utilize, will be 45 an hour. And you can see that's even lower than what they gave us for the Shea Center for adult sports. And then, yeah, it actually lists the classrooms twice on here. So the classrooms at Taylor Middle School will be $10 an hour. We also wanted to mention that as part of this agreement, we will be resurfacing the basketball court at Taylor Middle School. You can see from the photos here, this is a needed improvement. It will definitely help our youth sports teams as well as the Taylor Middle School students and the public when school is not in session. City staff has worked with MESD on the preliminary design for resurfacing the six full courts at Taylor Middle School, and the total cost is estimated at $280,000. The source of funds includes a $192,000 grant, which requires a local match of $48,000 for a total grant award of $240,000. The grant is from a State Park Per Capita funds awarded to the city, and the remainder of the $40,000 is from developer fee contributions. So this concludes my report on this. Staff does recommend that the City Council adopt a resolution approving the joint use agreement between MESD and the City of Millbrae for facilities and field use and athletic field maintenance. And of course, I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you so much, Director. Mr. Vice Mayor.
Yeah, just want to say thank you to the subcommittee and everyone that worked on this, getting this done. Thank you. My question is regarding the water cost. And of course, obviously, we have to water the grass. So have we explored or has there been exploration of utilizing some of the more efficient sod that we have within the city where I guess it goes deeper to the root or to find its source of water, and it is either little to no need to water the grass?
That is a great question. Looking at the city manager, who looks like he has a comment.
Yeah, Ms. Mayor, if I may, to answer the Vice Mayor's question. So anytime we have the opportunity to re-sod, that is our new standard. We've had great success on that experimental area at the park located off of Hillcrest.
Okay, thank you. And then with the cost, I guess we would see a savings if we start doing that. Would that impact the agreement, or would it be adjusted annually?
Yeah, so we have actually, in this agreement, agreed to fix rates for the next Yeah, so we have actually, in this agreement, agreed to fix rates for the next five years. And so that goes both directions. So.
All right. Thank you.
And City Manager, how is our preparation? Obviously, the purple pipe and the recycle water is something that we identify as a priority for implementation when, when, I shouldn't say if, when the funding is available from the federal government. But is the purple pipe, you know, ready? When the recycle water is ready up to all the school facilities?
Yeah, so that's a great question. So the backbone infrastructure will come up Richmond Drive.
Yeah.
So there's easy access to, then Green Hills Golf Course, which is our number one.
Biggest user.
And then, of course, the largest fields, which would be the Taylor Middle School field. So that's the priority in terms of the backbone infrastructure for the purple pipe installation when we get there.
Excellent. Great. Any other further questions, comment? Okay, go ahead. Councilmember Cahalan?
Just a comment, having been on the Subcommittee, I just want to thank and our City Manager and the Subcommittee of the School Board and three superintendents. It was a lot of, a lot of time and a lot of work, but in the end, everyone really came together for a great agreement to support the school district, the city, and especially all our youth. So thank you so much for all the hard work.
Okay, thank you so much. Councilmember Pappan?
Yes, thank you to all participants. It was a long haul. And for the public benefit and the school district and everything, none of us are making any money on any of this. It's all about community service and providing the resources for the community to enjoy the fields. Very excited that we have finally reached an agreement here and look forward to it. And if anybody doesn't know, I mean, I was at Green Hills School when the staff came in to just get it ready for baseball. And it was, had to be 30 staff. This is a huge staff effort to keep these fields up and running. So thank you, everyone. I just, it's, it's amazing to see. It's not one person with a lawnmower. It is a lot, a lot of work, and it is greatly enjoyed. I'm seeing people there during school, after school, and it's really a tribute to the City of Milbury that we are able to come together and provide these services and facilities. So thank you again. I move approval.
Okay, thank you so much. We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second? We have a second from Councilmember Cahalan. Any further, oh, I think we need to take public comment. Although I have no speaker slip.
Mayor, we don't have any speakers online.
Okay, bring it back to the council. We have a motion and we have a second. Any further comments? City Clerk, please do a roll call.
Councilmember Pappan?
Yes.
Councilmember Cahalan?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Goodman?
Aye.
Mayor Fong?
Aye.
Existing business item number 12, passed by a vote of four to zero with Councilmember Snyder excused.
Thank you so much. Well done.
Thank you.
Item number 13, adoption of a resolution awarding a construction contract to Build Corp, Inc. for Marina Vista Park renovation project in the amount of $1,048,32, establishing a project contingency of $156,124.80 for a total project budget of $1,196,956.80. Appropriate additional general funds and park impact fees in the amount of $125,623.51 and $172,308.29 respectively to complete the project and authorizing the City Manager or Destiny to execute a contract and all contracts change order up to the project budget. Mr. City Manager?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Mayor. I'd like to introduce our Director of Engineering and Public Works, Mr. Sam Batista.
Director Batista?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council Members. Sam Batista here, Director of Public Works and Engineering. So this is a very exciting project, and after a year's worth of planning and design, we're here at the construction phase. So this is just a brief outline of what we're going to talk about today. You know, the project background description, we'll look at the improvement plans, the bid results, and then we'll look at the financials and then end with the staff recommendation. So this is going to be a brave presentation for you all. So as I said, you, council has seen this project through its various planning stages, and Marina Vista Park is located at the end of Spruce Street and has remained unchanged for 25 years. The city has done an extensive public engagement process to prepare construction documents to renovate the park. And Assembly Member Diane Pappan and State Senator Josh Becker secured a grant in the amount of $374,050 to improve Bayside Manor Park and Marina Vista Park. So the State of California Natural Resource Agency is assigned to administer this grant, and $187,025 has been allocated to the Bayside Manor Park renovation project. And this project will make more welcoming, will make the park more welcoming and functional for recreation and enriching the community's quality of life by providing new amenities and increasing the park's capacity. So the project will include the installation of new irrigation systems, bioretention areas, paved walkways, landscaping, a new play structure, benches and picnic tables, barbecue grills, drinking fountains, dogway stations, new asphalt, renovated basketball court, and installation of shade structure, which the shade structure was a feature that residents were very passionate about. They really wanted shade structure so that they can be under a shade while looking at their children play in the different parts of the park. So this is just a copy of the improvement plan. And as you can tell, the new playground, the new playground structures are here on the south side of the park, the new turf area in the middle, and then, of course, the two basketball courts in the north. So the shade, shade structure that I'm talking about is right almost in the middle. But as you can see, it's, it's this dense-looking area here along with benches and barbecue grills. So regarding the construction bid results, we published the bid on February 2nd, 2024. Eight bids were received on March 7th. The lowest bidder was Build Corp, Incorporated, at $1,048,32. And the updated engineer's estimate was at $1,079,677. And regarding the financials, as you can see in this, the upper part of this slide, we had general fund and general impact fee, park impact fees. So we also have the grant also added into this. However, we need an additional appropriation from the general fund in the amount of $125,623.51, along with another additional appropriation of impact, park impact fees of $172,308.29 for a total project budget of $1,196,956.80. So this project budget includes a 15% project contingency of $156,124.80. So the staff recommendation is to adopt this resolution to award the construction contract to Build Corp, Incorporated, in the amount of $1,048,32 for the Marina Vista Park renovation project, and then establish the project contingency of $156,124.80 for a total project budget of $1,196,956.80 and appropriating additional general funds and park impact fees in the amount of $125,623.51 and $172,308.29 respectively to complete the project and to authorize all the contract documents, authorize the City Manager and doesn't need to execute those, those documents. So with that, I am happy to answer any of your questions.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Batista. Questions and comments from this council? Oh, hand raised? Do you have a comment?
It's exciting to see this move to the next phase. The only question I have is this, this is the budget for this whole part of the project, but I'm assuming, oh, there you go. You have the breakdown of fiscal year right there. Yeah, I was gonna say, some of it will be this fiscal year and some will be next fiscal year?
Right, because, because we're going into the new fiscal year. So it's going to just be, we're appropriating new, new money into this fiscal year and just goes into construction in the next.
Great, thank you.
And Councilmember Pappan, go ahead.
Thank you to staff, thank you to the prior council, because this has been years in the making that we really are excited to see this coming to fruition finally and worth the investment for sure. We do take the city as a whole here and want to bring it all together, so it is very, very exciting. Hopefully, we'll have a no golf sign up after all the golf balls that were found in the canal. But I'm really glad to see, thank you to our Senator and Assembly Member for helping us along with this. And I know the community is really eager to get this going too. So I'm, thank you again to staff to really moving this ahead. It's a great project, and we look forward to seeing it all happen.
Thank you.
So if there's no other comments, I'll move approval.
Okay, all right. So just a little clarification from the Director. So there's $132,300 from '23 to '24 general fund, and then additional appropriation, another $125. So those are two separate funding sources or two different budget? No, they're both general funds, $132,300 from '23 to '24, and then the additional appropriation of general fund, $125,623.
That's correct, and it's actually just from the fund balance of the general fund. So it'll, it's just what's within the general fund now. And we're just, we need to get councils approval to, to make that appropriation. So it's all part of the same fiscal year general fund.
Same fiscal year?
Yeah, I was, if I may, I was gonna mention that. So it is all coming from fiscal year '23, '24, not next fiscal year, '24, '25 that starts July first.
So this will be appropriated before July 1st?
Correct. It's appropriated this evening during this fiscal year.
Right, yeah, that's kind of what I meant, is this particular fiscal year. And was it previously anticipated to be about $132, and then additional appropriation is required?
Right, so, so the original allocation for this project was around $900,000.
Okay.
So we had to take out the design portion of it. So, because we had to pay for design, which was about $200,000 for each park. So, so this additional allocation is for that, backing filling that money so that we can go into construction.
I see. Mr. City Manager?
Well, just added to that, to that as well, there was a little bit of escalation due to kind of this higher-than-anticipated PCI inflation, inflationary factors.
Okay, got it. Ms. Cahalan, do you have a comment?
I was just gonna ask, thank you for the clarification that it's all appropriated in this fiscal year. Will it all be spent this fiscal year?
Well, the project will, the timeline for the project is they'll commence, say, in about three weeks, four weeks, gearing up, construction lay down, construction fencing, notification. So it will, it will, four months of, four or five months of construction, we're anticipating four months. But you never know until they start grading what they're gonna find underground and things. That's why the contingency, so four to five months build out. So it will go into next fiscal year, but all appropriated this year.
Yeah, just, obviously, there's a 15% project contingency here, about $156,000. We want this park done soon as possible. And obviously, it's been a long time coming, and I'd like to see this, make sure that this, these two parks are successfully built and implemented so that the youth, our residents, can enjoy. Obviously, every, every city is looking for a way to be more sharper on our pencil, lack of better words, on our budget. Is there opportunity there that, if appropriate, and that does not affect project schedule and the success, that we sharpen up our contingency a bit maybe to try to find a way to get it done in a more budgeted focus manner?
Yes, Mayor, we, you know, we intend to keep within the budget and make sure that we sharpen our pencils and make sure that we are fiscally prudent when we're in construction. So we will be looking for ways to save money, you know, and make sure that we have good solutions so that we, if we find something out of the field, you know, we hope that we don't have to use much contingency. But as the, as the City Manager just said, you know, who knows what we'll find out there. But that's our plan, is to keep it in budget.
Excellent. Sounds good.
Mr. Batista, he eats, lives, dreams value engineering. So he's on it.
Yeah. And when he eats, value engineering doesn't cost us extra.
Correct.
That's right. So with that, we have a motion from Councilmember Pappan. Do we have a second? We have a second from Councilmember Cahalan. Could you please do a roll call if no further comments?
Councilmember Pappan?
Yes.
Councilmember Cahalan?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Goodman?
Aye.
Mayor Fong?
Aye.
Item number 13, passed by a vote of four to zero with Councilmember Snyder excused.
Thank you so very much. Thank you, Mr. Batista. And, and we have now item number 14, a study session for fiscal year 2024 to '25 capital budget. Mr. City Manager, I see we have Mike Sung ready to go.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So I'd introduce Mr. Mike Sung, our Finance Director, in a joint presentation again with Mr. Sam Batista, our Director of Engineering and Public Works, for this presentation.
All right, we got two for one.
Good evening.
There you go.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Honorable Vice Mayor, and Honorable Counsel, Mike Sung, Finance Director. So today, we're going to talk to you about a non-general fund update as well as the capital improvement plan for fiscal year '24, '25. So just a quick outline, we're going to talk about recreation and the enterprise funds, also the CIP itself. We're going to give you an update as well as project highlights for '23, '24, our current year, and also the proposed '24, '25 capital improvement program. So really quickly, on recreation, what's happening next year for recreation in '24, '25 is what we're seeing is additional expenditures because we are looking at additional demand for classes, even more demand for classes and rentals. This is going to be offset by the new revenues that we're going to generate from the classes and the rental income. Why I wanted to mention this is the rec budget for next year is about $2.5 million. Now, what's happened is this year, when we budgeted for the rec budget, we were getting about 50% cost recovery. Half of the money was coming from the general fund. Half of it was from rental and class revenue. And we're anticipating it's actually going to go up to about 55% next year in '24, '25. Just a few years ago, we were looking at about 40% cost recovery, so we're trending in the right direction. And a lot of that has to do with Recreation Director being really efficient and having us move in that direction. Enterprise funds. So one of the things we wanted to kind of mention is the Water and Sewer Fund. What really is an enterprise fund? So an enterprise fund, an accounting term, it's a proprietary fund in itself. But really what it is, it's, it's just something that governments use to account for basically programs, services, and goods that are to the public for a fee. Now, these fees, what goes in comes out, and what the fees are used for are operations, maintenance, and capital. So everything that comes in, it gets used for those. used for those three categories themselves. So what we're going to see is we still have a lot of large and critical capital projects. They're programmed into the CIP over this next current year as well and into the future years. This is actually a good segue for me to hand this off to our Public Works Director.
Mr. Batista?
Hello again. So we talk CIP all the time, and the CIP is just a five to, a one to five-year plan that outlines the use of the funds with projects to construct and maintain municipal infrastructure. The CIP prioritizes types of projects, their benefits, funds, and allocates city resources and manpower to efficiently, economically, and effectively achieve city goals and benefits the community. So just to give you some updates regarding our fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four CIP, this slide just shows you the different funds and the number of projects we worked on and the associated expenditures. So with the Park Fund, we worked on four projects, and those ranged, or was valued approximately six hundred and ten thousand dollars of general fund. Going down to the Sewer Fund, we worked on sixteen projects for a total of eight, almost eight million dollars of Sewer Enterprise Fund. The Water Fund, we worked on eight projects totaling around six hundred twenty thousand dollars of Water Enterprise Fund. Now, the Storm Fund, we worked on four projects totaling about five hundred fifty thousand dollars of the general fund. And with the Streets Capital Fund, we worked on seven projects totaling about two point three million dollars. And those were funded by gas tax and different measures like Measure A, Measure W, Measure M. So those, those measures are from the county. And then the Facilities Fund, we worked on three projects for a total of four hundred fifty thousand dollars. And the Garage Fund, which we're working on two projects, about half a million dollars for vehicle and equipment replacement. So just to highlight some of the projects that we were working on in fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, the Upper Hillcrest Sub Basin Pavement Repair Project on Palm, we spent about two point nine million dollars there. Completed Millbrae Library, Makerspace, we worked on that, three hundred thirty-one thousand there. So these are projects that were previously designed in different fiscal year, but is currently under construction. And the Arroyo Seco Storm Drain Bypass Project, which is going to be complete in June of twenty-four, this coming up, and we spent about one point four million dollars. The Owani Drive Complete Utility and Pavement Rehabilitation Project, it's expected to be complete in June to or July of twenty twenty-four with an estimated expenditure of three point five million dollars. And then here are projects from fiscal year twenty-three that were constructed in this fiscal year. So the Central Park Tennis Court Resurfacing Project, where we spent almost two hundred thousand dollars for that. And then, of course, the Lincoln Circle Water Line, Street Light and Pavement Rehabilitation over on Lincoln Circle, which we spent about one point six million dollars. Here is another pavement rehabilitation project along Santa Barbara Drive that was six hundred thirty thousand dollars. And then we, we celebrated the opening of the Skylight Water Tank Replacement Project, and we spent over six million dollars. So engineering has been pretty busy this fiscal year. So going into the next fiscal year, we'll be talking about the proposed projects for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. And the first section is going to be the Parks, Park CIP. We're looking at working on seven projects for a total of two point nine million dollars. The first is a rollover project, which is the Green Hills Park Pathway Replacement Project. As you know, Green Hills Park has some uplifted asphalt, so we need to fix and repair those pathways. And we're looking at about a hundred thousand there. Mills, whoops, Mills Estate Reactivation. So this project has been previously designed, so we'll be looking at the design. And then, of course, as the council has requested, that we go out and do more public engagement so we can get feedback from the residents and neighbors. So we will be working on this after Bayside Manor Park renovation and the Marina Vista Park renovations are completed. Next is, are the two parks that we are, you know, we have been discussing, Bayside is going to be rebid and going out to bid immediately, and we plan to award that in, in June and go into construction by July. So we're, that's going out shortly. And then Marina Vista Park, as you know, you, thank you very much for approving that contract, so we'll be going out to bid, or going out to construction within the next month. So those are exciting. So this is a new project, the Japanese Rose Garden, to design and construct a Japanese rose garden right off of the Spur Trail on Millbrae Avenue near Magnolia. And then, of course, the Spur Trail, one of the, one of the things that we've heard about, especially when it's getting grants, spur trails and connections to regional facilities and, you know, Bay Trail to the trails up by Sawyer Camp. You know, those are things that we're looking at, and, and we would like to prepare conceptual plans for connectivity, and we'll look at also grant writing services within this Spur Trail project. And next is the Central Park Recreation Center, Central Park and Recreation Center Security Cameras. We're looking at trying to install security cameras in Central Park and the Recreation Center, the external exterior portions of the building just to prevent any, any vandalism. So we're, once again, the Park CIPs is looking at about an expenditure of two point nine million dollars. So these are CIP projects that are recommended by the Park and Recreation Commission, but funding for the following future projects are to be determined. So the first project is the Park and Facilities Master Plan, and that's to prepare a new Parks and Facilities Master Plan by reviewing all the, all the documents that we have, looking at all the parks, facilities, and determining the needs of our growing population here. This would also include public outreach and engagement. So we want to hear what, what our residents would like to see in the parks. And as we heard earlier, is to also look at the pet component. So the next project is the Dog Park, looking at a location for a new Dog Park and prepare conceptual designs, and through public engagement, receive any type of feedback. So that's one project that's to be, funded, to be determined. And then the next one is just the Central Park Pathway, which is to install cameras, lights, and conduits along that northern pathway in Central Park, which is in close proximity to the community garden. Okay, let me take a break. Okay.
That's the value engineering drink.
Yeah, there's, there's like thirty-four slides, we're only on slide fourteen. So, okay, so here we go. Sewer, you know, this is one of my favorite projects to work on. So we have about fourteen point nine four million dollars worth of sewer CIPs, which consist of eighteen projects, both in the collections and the wastewater treatment plant. So the first is the collection systems inspection, which is cleaning and inspecting about fifteen percent of our collection system. Next is the sewer lateral and main replacement projects, which is just the, you know, repair and replace any broken sewer mains based on inspection reports or emergencies. As with any, you know, any treatment plan in a harsh environment, our equipment does break. So this next is equipment replacement over at the Water Pollution Control Plant. The next is the Asset Information Asset Management Project, which is just to continue mapping our system into a format where we can add it into GIS. And we have the Nearshore Outfall, which was approved by council, and we will be starting that in mid-May, and it'll be continuing through August. And that's a very big project at one point one million dollars. The Co-Generational System Replacement, we're looking at updating the design of the CoGen to, to take into advantage the emerging technologies that will benefit our treatment plant. But our recommendation is to look at the design, update it, and then we'll go into construction of this project in twenty-seven, twenty-eight. Then we have the Sledge Sticker and Digestors, the mechanical components of this, of this processing, or the process at the treatment plant needs to be replaced. And then we also have to do repairs to the concrete surface and recoat the surface of the concrete. So that's one point two million dollars. Next is the Lower Hillcrest Sub Basin for South Sanitary Sewer Replacement. So we'll be looking at replacing sewers in Magnolia, Lansdale, Taylor, Poplar, Elder, Palm, and there's a line in the Central Park, and then do some pavement repairs in addition to that. So this is a big chunk, four million dollars. The Aviador East Millbrae Avenue Capacity Upgrade, we're looking at upsizing this upgrade. So we're looking at this, as a, continuing the design of this project. Next is the Annual Sewer Main Replacement Project, with, there are two subprojects under this program, the Marina Vista Sewer Replacement Project, looking at doing some upgrades to sanitary sewer and doing pavement rehab in Landing Lane, Oak Street, Bernie Court, and San and Salvo Avenue, and also on Millbrae Avenue, Millbrae Circle off of Millbrae Avenue. So three point two million dollars, big project. The Meadows Water Main and Sanitary Sewer Replacement Project, this is just, this is just the sewer portion of this project, and it's to design the sewer, sanitary sewer on Helen Drive between Lostwood and Larkspur. So the Madrone Forest Main Replacement, so this is a multi-year project, and we are going into the environmental studies and permitting of this project, so that's a hundred fifty thousand. City SCADA Upgrade Project, we have been buying new hardware, and so we still need to start, we need to upgrade the computer terminals and existing SCADA operating system. That's, we're rolling over this project, it's one point five million dollars. The Hacienda Lift Station Project, this is the design of replacing the existing lift station in, on Hacienda into a gravity system. And council did approve the design of this project. And then next is the Recycled Water Project, and we just held a study session. We'll be finalizing the feasibility study, and after the feasibility study, we will start design. So the feasibility serves as the basis of the design, and so we're looking at eight hundred thousand dollars for this project. Next is the Hypochlorite System Improvements, which is just replacing piping at the wastewater treatment plant for the hypochlorite system. The Aeration Tank and Secondary Clarifiers Improvements, we're looking at replacing valves at the Aeration Basin and clean and coat the basin and clarifier interior. And then the next one is the Millbrae Downtown Specific Plan Improvements, part of its new and part of its multi-year, which is, means that we've, we've done some of the design, and now we're wanting to implement improvements within, that were identified in the downtown specific plan. So this is, we're going to be doing water pavement repair and a water main replacement. But this portion of it is, we did a sewer replacement earlier, and so we'll be also doing pavement replacement with this, with this funding. So lots of money, sewer, fourteen point nine million dollars. Next. All right. Next is the Water CIP. So we have eight projects totaling eight point, or excuse me, six point eight seven five million dollars. Once again, we, we have the Asset Information Asset Management, which is this, as I said, just digitizing all our, and mapping our assets so that it's available for JS. Next is the LaPrenda Tank. This is to design either rehab or replacement of the LaPrenda Water Tank. Council did approve this, the design, and, or actually, council did approve the, the exploratory necessary for, for determining rehab or replacement. So once we get the, the results from that, that survey of that tank, then we know which direction to go with this, with design. Here we are with the Millbrae Downtown Specific Plan, construction and replacement of water mains and various pavement repairs through Broadway and adjacent street blocks from Victoria Avenue to Taylor Boulevard. So we're looking at three point five million dollars, which is a multi-year project. We have the Highline, and the Highline Hillsborough Water Transmission Main, which is about one point eight million dollars, and that is to construct a water line from the Harry Tracy Plant to the City of Hillsborough along Skyline, which is to provide redundant water supply if there is a large seismic event, or provide fire protection along the Skyline city limit. So it's beneficial for that portion of the city. Next is the twenty twenty-five Annual Water Main Replacement Program. We're looking at, it was formerly known as the twenty twenty-four Annual Water Main Replacement Program, and it's rolling over. We're, we're looking at the Arroyo Seco Water Main Replacement, which is just to construct a remainder of a portion of a water line that was designed. And then there's a, a replacement on El Benito Way. It's to replace an existing three-inch galvanized water main. So in addition to the sewer line, we're replacing the water main on, in the Meadows on Larkspur Drive and Helen Drive. Or, yeah, right. And then the Aviador, this SFO Property Water Main Replacement, install a new water main from Aviador to SFO in the Bayside Manor neighborhood. So that's a multi-year project, and we're looking at about a hundred thousand there. So those are the eight projects for a total expenditure of six point eight seven five million dollars. 6.875 million dollars. All right. Next is the Storm C I Ps. There is three projects that we're looking at for 500,000 dollars. The first one is the Helen Drive Stormwater Sub Basin Improvements. And this is to study and design storm drain improvements along Helen Drive. As we heard earlier today from our residents on Helen Drive. So we're going to be looking at that closely. Next is Landing Lane Trash Capture Devices. Install new trash capture devices in Landing Lane as well as looking at the the trash capture device over at the Landing Lane Bowl. So that's what we're looking at for that 250,000. And then the Anita Drive Drainage Sub Basin Stormwater Study, which is to look at the study, the the storm wire as it flows off of the street and onto private properties. So we're looking at finding solutions to fix fix any storm water going on to going on to private property. So that's about 50,000 dollars. So that's the three projects there. Next is the street projects, which are which are 10 projects, about 3.9 million dollars. So the first is the Annual Sidewalk Maintenance Program. It's just replacing damaged and broken sidewalk throughout the city. So we'll be looking at trying to concentrate inspection of sidewalks and replacing those broken sidewalks. The 2023 Annual Pavement Maintenance Program, this is rolling over into fiscal year 24, 25. The slurry seals to extend the life of the pavement on Richwood Drive, Millwood, Barcelona, Cappuccino and Menorca Way. The next one is the 2024 Annual Pavement Maintenance Program, which is looking at pavement maintenance and rehabilitation on Hawthorne Avenue. And then we're looking at Ludeman Lane from Laurel to its end. And then we're looking at Laurel from Ludeman Lane to Helen Drive. And this will also include pedestrian and traffic calming improvements. Next is the 2024 Annual Pavement Rehabilitation Project. This the difference between maintenance and rehabilitation, maintenance is more of a slurry seal, that type of treatment, while rehabilitation is putting down asphalt overlays. So we're looking at about 920,000 dollars worth of asphalt overlays and ADA improvements. Staff is still looking at locations for that type of rehabilitation, but that is a new project. And then we are also looking at, this is, the next project is the Millbrae Downtown Specific Plan Improvement Project. It's multi-year. We're looking at, you know, looking at how do we can widening the sidewalk, what kind of street furniture, you know, landscaping in accordance to the downtown specific plans. So we'll be starting that effort this fiscal year. Next is the Millbrae Bridge Bike Path over Highway 101. It's designing this bicycle path. It's been reviewed by Caltrans, reviewed by other agencies. It's just a multi-year project. It's rolling over and we're continuing this project. Next is the Millbrae Transit Micro Mobility Hub, which is to construct a mobility hub by the Bart Station. That's the Rondo Avenue with grant and with, we did receive a grant for this project. And this 50,000 dollars that's listed here is just the match for the project. We'll be going into instruction for that project. Next is just the Annual Traffic Calming Program, which is as it as it says, is the traffic calming program, whether we're, whether it's going to be speed cushions, you know, maybe radar signs, well, you know, just looking at ways to try to slow down traffic in the areas that needed. So we're looking at about 150,000 dollars for that. The Parking Meter Implementation Authority. So we put down a million dollars. However, you know, that that's just earmarked and what we are playing on with this for this project, we plan on purchasing and installing parking kiosks. So we will be coming to council with the update and the final parking management plan. No later than July, but we do have a public engagement event. One last public engagement event with the people within the parking district boundaries so that they understand what is going to be happening. And then we do have this Aviador Bridge Replacement. So we're looking at, this is preliminary engineering for the bridge replacement. That that bridge needs to be looked at structurally, needs to be replaced. The staff is looking at grant funding to see if we can receive funds for both design and for construction, since it is a emergency vehicle ingress egress. It also is part of the proposed Bay Trail and and it it's a connector, connected to the Bay Trail. And now we're going to the Facility C I P. We have six projects at about 650,000 dollars. So the first project is the re-roof of the Corporation Yard Service Shed. That's about 200,000 dollars. The Council Chamber Upgrade, which is a multi-year, which, you know, we were planning doing some improvements this year, but unfortunately, we're going to be rolling it over to fiscal year 24, 25, looking at putting in new monitors so that residents and people who's in the audience don't just look this way, we're trying to look at places here. So that's all we'll be using that the project and maybe perhaps updating some of the audio. The Fire Station 38 is to update any interior electrical system issues and or address interior electrical system issues and renovate the bathroom and kitchen. So we're looking at about 100,000 dollars there.
Sorry, if I just stop you there first. Just go back one slide. Somebody E V chargers.
Oh, yes, sorry.
I just wanted to say, I think Peninsula Clean Energy have some grant program available for that sort of thing. Just don't want to forget about that.
Yes, Mayor. We, in fact, we capitalize on P C E's grant program for the seven charging stations that we installed over at the Millbrae Recreation Center. So so this this project here, the E V Chargers City Fleet, is so that we can start converting our actual, our city vehicles to E V. So for 50,000 dollars plus, we'll be contacting P C E for grant funding.
Because I know they have a surplus fund that we had some discussion at the end of last year and then there are certain there's some generous funding available for projects such as this, in addition to the 300,000 that we have already been bringing back to the city. So do not overlook these opportunities.
Oh, definitely, Mayor. We we like money. So the next one is the Planning Department Front Counter Renovation, just to organize and renovate that front counter to improve its efficiency and productivity. And then the last is the Taylor Middle School Basketball Court renovation. And the project, as you know, will renovate that basketball court. And and we will, you know, we promise the school district that we would have it done by the end of summer. So the kids will be going back to school with a new basketball court. So, or new basketball courts. All right. So we're almost done. Next is the Garage C I P two projects. We are replacing the airport generator. So the airport pump station needs to be replaced or pump station generator needs to be replaced. So we're looking at 250,000 dollars there. Vehicle replacement, replace up to four public works vehicles. As I said, we're going to hopefully start migrating to electric vehicles. So 250,000 there. And, oh, well, that was it for the C I P. So I will give it back to Mike to go over this slide.
Thank you, Sam. So we just wanted to show you what the funding actually looked like, what our beginning fund balance is estimated to be at at the beginning of the fiscal year 24. You can see what the revenues are projected at as well as our operating expenditures. Those are all the non-capital expenditures. And what the capital amounts were, which is what Sam had actually gone through and what our ending estimate is. So that kind of shows you a brief summary of what we're really looking at. We're trying to get the capital up and running. We're trying to catch up with time. Leave in value engineering, we want to get these things done earlier than later because the costs will continue to climb up. So that's kind of our take on this. We want to make sure that we capture the opportunities while we can and it's kind of our plan right now. So with that, we'd like to open it up to any questions?
So I'm looking at this, the estimated year-end fund balance for 2024 is 32 million. And your estimated year-end at 2025 is 10 million. So we're going to be net spending about 22 million dollars?
Yes, we would be spending about 22 million dollars. It's mainly because we've built a lot of reserves for the, a fund balance, I should say, not reserves, fund balance for the enterprise funds. And those fund balances, we consciously made a decision to accumulate it and then try to get all these projects in. And that's what Sam and his group have been doing. So that's why you'll see the fund balance consciously go down.
And then you, we still have a reserve after that?
We do. The reserve for the sewer and the water is by definition 15%. That's 4 million for the sewer, 2.6 million for the water. And that's not even on this chart. Basically, just the reserve itself. It's actually off of this chart. Fund balance itself.
Right. So so I just want to ask a high level question. Do we have a healthy reserve coming in, knowing that we're drawing down a certain amount, a good portion of our fund balance?
I believe so.
Okay.
Yeah, we do. And I, and I think just to bring, you know, to your attention, I think Mayor and Council, you probably know this. I mean, we don't want to have that 32 million dollar fund balance. Because we want to, you know, the collection of the enterprise funds and the revenue annually, that goes back into our infrastructure for a healthy sewer system, healthy water system, you know, to avoid those main breaks. Obviously, I wish that we had an enterprise fund for our for our storm drain facility, something that we will be looking at and perhaps bringing that back as a enterprise revenue source for our storm drain system. But, yeah, we we, as Mr. Sung said, we've built that up because we've been doing projects, but even more so now. And I mean, I'll take this opportunity to thank Sam and his staff. Obviously, there's a lot of work. We're doing more with less, but these are desperately needed improvements. And like I always say, 10 dollars and eat 1 dollar revenue. I mean, we could, you know, 10 times this amount of projects in the city if we actually had the revenue.
And and also just to be clear, obviously, we have the life science building building up. There's going to be a lot of daytime traffic as we bring a lot of new employments. What about infrastructure upgrade to accommodate those increase of daytime populations?
Yeah. So that's a great point. So, you know, the the Development Impact Fee Ordinance that the council adopted several years ago, we collect, you know, that fair share impact on development impact fees to make those traffic improvements. Actually, Sam and Traffic Engineering side of the house is is looking at traffic civilization, timing, additional dedicated turning lanes and movements.
Or or even water and sewer with those new commercial buildings.
Yeah.
Capacities.
Yeah. So to that point, you you may recall that both Alexandria and Longfellow were conditioned to improve a large sewer pipe and water main, as well as a storm drain, actually, that goes just parallel to Millbrae Avenue on the north side of their property. So.
Excellent. Okay. Questions, comments? Go ahead. Councilmember Papen.
Could you share the slideshow with us? It's, you have the report here, but if you could send us this slideshow as a follow-up, that'd be great. I'm going to try to go really fast here. Okay, the tennis courts, those were funded way before the fire even. So I'm a little confused. I'm sure we had increased costs. We had COVID and all that stuff, but to see certain things on here that were funded long ago. And it was before you all too. So I'm not before probably all the staff here. But I'm curious if somebody could go back and look. So you don't have to do that here. When we talk about sewer and water, I'm just curious, are we tracking the number of breaks? Hopefully, they are decreasing and not increasing. It would be interesting to know. That's kind of more, hopefully, we're getting more efficiencies built in with such qualified staff. And new technology. So again, don't have to answer that now. I am concerned about rollovers because that kind of relates to efficiencies. They are noted on here. So if we could. This is actually an amazing plan. It's so good to see that we're actually diving in and getting, hopefully, so many of these things accomplished. I wish you well. I hope you come back and say, check, 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 check on all these things. Because that would be really exciting. It would also be nice if we have something like this, like estimated completion. I know you say some are multi-year, but this is really, again, quite an amazing plan. And I hope you can accomplish everything that you've done here. One concern I have, and this is again previously, quality inspections. I know we have consultants. I don't like our consultants. I don't think they do a very good job, which means it comes back to staff here to follow up because we have so many road projects, so many sewer and water things here. I'm a little confused at the water main on Helen and Larkspur. That Larkspur was closed for I don't know how long. So is this a different section or is this where you're going back on to Larkspur to dig up the road again? What, could you explain to me? Maybe I'm misunderstanding.
Sure. There's a, there's a high pressure water main there that actually did break. And so that's another, that is something that was unforeseen, but unfortunately, it broke. So we do have to go back in there and fix it.
And I'll note too that San Francisco's water thing at the top of the road, if we can blame them for anything and get some money from them, because they have been known to overflow our system once in a while. Please take a look at that. Sidewalk vendors, you know, residents get, are made responsible for a lot of the sidewalks these days. Tree roots and things like that. It would be very helpful if somehow we had a resource on our website as to approve vendors. And again, trying to reduce the cost to the residents because it becomes very expensive if somebody gets cited. We all have, even grinding, it's helpful. So we need to help our residents through this process in order to maintain safe sidewalks. Grant dollars you mentioned. Okay. What I didn't see on here was the grant funding for studying the station. We received.
What station again?
The Bart Station.
So there's a grant from M T C. It rests within community development. And so that that was in a previous C I P.
We're still going with that.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll show it as rolling over, just so we keep track of it for you.
Okay. And it would be nice, I know you, again, I'm very impressed with all the Okay. Um, and it would be nice. I know you, again, I'm very impressed with all the work being done here. We have budgeted dollars. It would be great for us to know what the end costs are. Hopefully when you have that buffer, I'm not using the terminology.
Contingency.
Contingencies. It would be great to see the amount of contingencies that are actually spent and some we can reinvest in the future. Hopefully we get in a habit of, we didn't need the contingencies and we saved a whole bunch of money. So you can do more things here. That would be great. Uh, I think I've hit you with a lot of things here. Again, I'm quite impressed. I hope we can be extremely successful here. A final note is our, I think it's called CPI, our road ratings.
PCI.
PCI. Sorry.
Payment Condition Index.
Yes, thank you. Um, I'm curious about that because most residents will tell you their streets are collapsing and shredded and all of that.
Sure. So our, our, our PCR, our pavement condition index is about 53. Uh, when we do these, which is, you know, it's, that's still considered fair, but once you hit, once you're at 50 and down, that's poor. Just, you know, so.
We're kind of near the edge there.
We really want to continue a, a, a nice, um, pavement program, whether it's slurry seal, which is to extend, uh, extend the life of good pavement versus, uh, doing these, um, the rehabilitation, do the asphalt overlays and, you know, that, that, that you don't get a lot for your money for when you do, um, the rehab. But maintenance, we can go throughout the city, look at those good, uh, good streets and, um, and save those for, you know, relatively, um, I wouldn't say cheap, but economically save good streets.
All right.
Like we want, you know, every time we do something, we want to just continue to go up. So.
The number is up. Yeah.
So I believe, um, they haven't recalculated our, our new PCI, but it, uh, we've done enough, um, road, um, rehabilitation and maintenance that it should kind of go up a couple of points.
Okay. That'd be great. Uh, two final notes here. The water tank replacement. We've, again, prior to probably all the current staff, that was approved years ago.
That's correct. So the reason why we're showing those two projects is because they were actually constructed within, constructed or finished during this fiscal year. So it were, we're, um, we're showing that as example of a true rollover because the rollover is designed way, way back, but we're finally getting to construction after all these years.
I know. That's what's frustrating. Finally getting to construction here. Um, so as my parting note, again, thank you very much, but quality of work. I, we contract out for too many things and I just, we need to ensure that we're not paying twice for failures that contractors or consultants just didn't do the appropriate work. So I, I know that's more. Um, I, I hope, um, everybody, because we have to ensure the taxpayer dollars are used to the best of their ability and just.
Agreed.
Saying an excuse that we had a contractor that failed, we need to then follow up and sue them or get our money back. So thank you very much, everybody. Appreciate it. And you made it, Sam. Keep drinking there. Thank you very much.
Mayor, if I may, just to, just to bring to the council's attention on a couple of those points. So one is, um, when you see the agenda items, when we're bringing it to the council, like we had an item tonight on, um, on closing out the Maker Space, right? So that's, that's when we bring that and we say, okay, here's a budget, here's a contingency. Um, or we may bring a project to the council that we've saved contingency, but we can add more to the project. And so we'll bring that back. So that's always in front of the council. And, and so we'll make sure that we actually bring that to your attention as we close out projects and identify in the staff. Or we'll keep it on consent still, but then identify, you know, here's our savings, you know, some of the other things too. I mean, that's why we have that large $32 million.
And.
Fund balance to your point, but we're, all the stuff that you're concerned about is, it's being corrected, holding consultants accountable, DPO that we're in, we're, we're much improved and, 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 and great success there.
And I'm sure the public would like to know, on time, on budget?
Yep.
Or what? If, if we can think that thoughtfully, that'd be great.
You know, I mean, we've, we've done a great, I mean, we, yeah, I mean, we have. And, and all along the way, you know, if we know it, the council will know it. Yeah.
Sounds good. Anyone else? Let's go ahead. Go ahead.
Thank you so much for this thorough presentation. Um, I know it's a lot, but it's, it's very much appreciated. Um, the, I, I, the timelines would be great as well to understand when we anticipate projects being done and, um, if some are multi-year, which phases would be in which year. Um, the one question, like a detailed question I had in the sewer and in the water sections, some of them just spoke about, um, replacement of mains and pipes, and some said mains, pipes and paving. Does that mean like the ones that didn't include paving in the description, they're just going to kind of have the seals and the ones that did include paving mean everything done and they're getting paved, paved?
So what we're trying to do is, and, and you'll see, uh, parts of, parts of these projects had, you know, the sewer component, a water component. So they were kind of listed on both water and sewer, right? So what we're trying to do is implement the one dig policy. And, um, and then, and then finally put a nice pavement on, on the affected streets. So that's how we intend to do a lot of our projects is, you know, try to get as much done within, in, in underground and then cover it up with the brand new pavement.
Thank you. Um, one other question I had was, I know this year, um, I've heard that we've been working on our storm drain master plan, um, but I didn't see that here. Is that because it's already covered in this year's budget or falls under the threshold for council approval?
Right. So in terms of the storm, um, storm drain master plan, we have a storm drain master plan that was done in, um, 2018, 2019, slowly updated, um, slowly updated, uh, when we need, uh, help from consultants. So we're, we've been working on an existing plan, but we, when we see deficiencies in certain areas, we, you know, we look at, uh, we concentrate on those areas. So really, you know, the, um, a master plan is good for at least 10 years. Um, but if there's certain enough areas that need revision, then we'll be bringing it back. But, um, that's where we're at with that, with the storm drain master plan.
Um, thank you. And just again, with that detail, it's not just helpful to us as we review budget and understand, but I think to have it spelled out so clearly and by streets and location, it's so beneficial to the public to have that transparency and for people to see how much, um, you all are doing and, uh, when, when their neighborhood and when their street, it's their turn. Um, so I think this is a great precedent for us to continue into the future as we do the budget each year. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Excellent. So, um, I just want to, a couple of other things. Uh, is there in there, in the capital improvement at some point, a battery for the rec center? I, I, cause I, I only ask because I know there's funding for it.
So I can, so that is, um, it's designed and planned.
Yeah.
Um, and so that's, Mr. Mayor will be tapping into, uh, PCE, uh, for some grant funding there to implement that, um, battery storage, which is designated off-site, um, because there were some fire code issues and that type of thing for, for battery storage in the rec center. So there is actually conduit and wiring, um, that, that goes across the plaza on the south side, um, to our corporation yard, you know, our, our maintenance.
Right.
So that's where the battery storage shed will be located.
Because I do know that.
The infrastructure's there.
Cause I do know that, um, in addition to the $300,000 of funding, they have extra funding just being appropriated for this type of, um, you know, planning, uh, and implementation because we do want to use, I, I do believe this rec center has been designed as a, um, disaster refuge, which in some cases, if there is a major power outage, um, these battery could come in very, very handy.
Yeah, no, that, that's a great point. I mean, uh, I, I was a little bit nervous because of the fact that it is a, um, it is a certified, um, evacuation center.
Yeah.
And with now with solar, um, you know, that really improves our ability. So the power does go out, but that battery storage, we, we are going to tap into PC and, and take advantage of that and get that battery storage, um, installed as part of.
Especially when they have over $200 million of surplus funds. This is the, this is the time to do it.
Yeah. And it's, we are definitely going to tap into that because then, then we're, then not only Millbury, but our neighboring cities, if they need to, will have power. So I mean, it, yeah.
And, and then also solo array for the city hall?
Yes. Sam, you want to talk about?
Oh, yeah, sure. So yes, we are, that is starting actually. Um, we're, we've been working with PCE for our civic center here.
Yes.
So that, uh, as soon as, uh, PC finds us the, uh, another contractor, because the contractor who was working on that project has left. So they're looking for a new contractor. However, all the engineering, uh, everything is ready to go. So we're just waiting for PC to deploy their, their contractor to the civic center.
Do we have enough roof space for all of it? And if we don't, you know, we should be able to use the parking lot in the library area to put up, um.
Yes, we do.
What'd you call it?
We do have enough, uh, area for, um, the, the originally designed, um, PV system.
Perfect. I just want to make sure we, we get there. So if you can just bring back the slide that you were on before, that, that was a great slide, by the way. There you go. I just want to bring to people's attention, if you look at the revenue, it's 37 million, nearly 700,000 with an operating expenditure of 29 million and change. That means we are accumulating additional fund balance every year by about $8 million a year, a little bit more than 8 million a year, uh, anticipated. So that's a wonderful budgeting and planning. And hopefully certainly with, um, more infrastructure upgrade and, and capital improvement, uh, we will continue to be more efficient. Um, so the expenditure of operating expenditure continue to go down. Um, and so that we can continue to fund more improvement for our infrastructure. This is, I just want to tell, let the public know that this is a very conscientious effort, uh, in making sure that we, um, run a positive fund balance so that we can fund all these capital projects that will improve, um, our city's vital infrastructure. So thank you so much for your job. Well done. All right. So with that, we'll take a motion to, um, is it accept the report? It's a study session. It's an action nonetheless.
Yes, we will be bringing this back. And then I think to, um, Councilmember Kaylin's point, just in the process. So once it's approved, once the CIP is approved, each of the individual projects, when we bid that out, we'll also come back to the city council with the actual, um, um, budget that, you know, from the.
Details.
The details on the bid documents, the awarding of the bid, and then the timeline.
Do I have a motion to accept the report and, is that accepting the report? City manager?
This is no act, this is just an information item this evening.
This is action.
Yeah.
The, the action is to accept the report.
There you go. So do I have a motion to accept the report?
So move, so move by Vice Mayor.
Second.
Okay. We have a second from Councilmember Kaylin. City co, please.
Sure. Councilmember Pappen?
Yes.
Councilmember Kaylin?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Goodman?
Aye.
Mayor Fong?
Aye.
The city council accepted the, uh, item number 14, motion passed by 4 to 0 with Councilmember Snyder excused.
Thank you so much. And we now into new business, final.
In the meeting or are we good still?
We got about 30 minutes.
Okay.
We'll be okay. So new business, item 15, which is the final item for today. It's the approved, the, um, engineer's report and declaring intention to update fire suppression assessment. It is an action item. Mr. City Manager.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Mayor. And again, our finance director, Mr. Mike Sung, will provide the presentation. We also have our assessment, uh, engineer from Harrison Associates, the project manager and civil engineer, Mr. Rick Clark, available for questions.
All right. Thank you, City Manager Williams. Good evening again. Um, today we're going to be talking about, um, our, uh, new engineer's report for the fire assessment. Just a little background, Millbury's had a fire assessment since, uh, 2004. It's been renewed in 2009, 2014, and 2014. And it is set to expire in, uh, 2024 unless it's reauthorized. Um, all parcels would pay an assessment. And if approved by the voters, this would , uh, continue to ensure firefighting, lifesaving equipment and facilities are kept in place, containing rapid response times and the effectiveness of the, uh, Millbury Fire Department. So what, why are we here? We originally came in, um, November of 2023 and, um, we had a fire assessment vote and, uh, that didn't pass at the February 27th, uh, meeting. Um, we had the, uh, majority of the votes, um, for the ballots, but this is a weighted assessment. So, so some votes are actually worth more than others. And if you count in the weighting, uh, it was actually 45 to, um, 55. Current assessment is 175, um, for the, uh, per unit for single family and duplexes. And the multifamily rate is approximately $125. It remains pretty static for the duration. Um, council, um, after hearing our report on March 12th, directed us to, uh, go back out with the new, uh, public outreach campaign for the reauthorization of the fire assessment. So what's already happening?
Mike, ma, Mr. Mayor, I think it's important for anybody listening. So Mike, can you go back the slide? So.
Sure.
This is annually.
Sure.
So I just wanted to make sure that everybody knew that that was an annual assessment, not a monthly assessment.
Okay. Uh, thank you, City Manager Williams. So, um, for public outreach, we already, um, conducted a survey of the property owners with our longtime opinion research professional. And, um, of course, the results showed that, uh, property owners are highly motivated and interested in maintaining, um, our, um, fire and emergency services here. And, um, what had happened is, um, we had a couple of community meetings before. We engaged in two more community meetings, most recently in April 11th, which was Thursday, and this past, um, Saturday as well. And, uh, we incorporated even more feedback. Originally, we had mentioned we'd gotten some feedback from the residents during the original process. We got even more feedback, uh, during, um, these last two sessions as well. But the reoccurring themes that we've seen that we're going to recommend incorporating is having this as a tenure term. Originally it was in perpetuity. Uh, we're going to look at maintaining the oversight committee, which is an original recommendation that most people seem to like. Um, having the condominium assessments treated as multifamily rates, which is, uh, something that was a recommendation that came from, uh, the public. Um, reducing the assessment as some residents had expressed a, uh, rate sensitivity. Um, and also, um, having, uh, you know, just, just for, um, some of the, um, older generation, a larger font and, um, somebody even recommended color coordination of the, um, envelopes in the ballots, which we believe we can make happen. Um, so what we're really looking at here is, um, we've done some additional outreach, uh, to the HOAs. We've done outreach before. We've done even further outreach. I've called, uh, most of the HOAs, um, other governmental entities. We've talked to the, uh, school board, uh, school district. We've talked to, uh, BART, um, and some of the large property owners, um, as well. And, um, sent out another informational mailer in early April regarding, um, possibility of looking at this is, uh, again, upcoming. What we're looking at is even more, um, informational letters and, uh, digital outreach as well as, um, continuing, um, to, um, inform the property owners. Um, we'll continue to look at, uh, additional, um, outreach to the community groups, um, more meetings with the communities as well as other governmental entities and businesses. So with engineer's report, and now details is the budget, uh, for and the services that, that are funded, um, by the assessment, analyzes the benefits of each of these parcels and establishes the method of the assessment and calculates the portionment. So all this has to, uh, be done and comply with, um, proposition 218. Um, you need to have the proposed amount per parcel, total of the assessments in the entire district, the duration and the reason. Have as well. It's 10 years now. Basis of the calculation, um, date, time and place of the public hearing, which, uh, we're anticipating would be, um, June 11th, tentatively. um, date, time and place of the public hearing, which, uh, we're anticipating would be, um, June 11th, tentatively. Uh, and this, uh, assessment has to be supported by the engineer's report, um, signed by the registered engineer, which is Rick Clark over at, um, Harrison Associates. So the assessment would continue to be structured, uh, so that the larger parcels pay, uh, their fair share. Um, so it's not just the homeowners burdening loan. And the assessment, uh, we're currently looking at is, um, at $199, uh, for single family homes and duplexes, uh, per unit, per year, and, uh, 14250 for multifamily homes. Little chart on the side that kind of shows, um, if you can see, uh, what the rates are and how it's actually, um, factored out for some of the other entities like hotels, it's by per room. If you look at office retail, it's by per square foot. These, this is all inside the, um, engineer's report, actually.
Does A D U count as additional dwelling unit?
Um, it depends on what it actually, um, says on the, um, county's, um, website. If some of the A D Us will, um, be counted in as an additional unit. Now, it'd be a registered A D U. If it's not a registered A D U, and it doesn't show up on the county's, um, website, then. If it's registered, it would. So the notice and ballot would be mailed to each property owner, and this has to be done a minimum of 45 days in advance. It's currently set for June 11th. It would need to go out, um, at the end of this week, um, April 26th, 27th. Uh, if a majority of the property owners who returned their assessment are actually opposed, um, and by the weighted assessment, this assessment wouldn't go forward. Um, and this assessment has just not kept pace with inflation. Um, so a proposed adjustments recommended, posing something, um, that's aligned with C P I, but not to exceed 3%, so it's, um, manageable. It, uh, keeps it in line. Also, it, uh, helps deal with, uh, variations, like especially the last couple of years, where the C P I has been extremely high. So this current assessment does provide, you know, um, a stable locally controlled source of revenue. Um, want to stress locally, um, controlled, because this really is an assessment that only comes to the city, and it's only going to be used for fire suppression assessment. You know, recent actions that have been taken by the county and the state really underscore the need for us to maintain a local source, so that, um, we have the local source. This will definitely help. Um, you know, uh, the city would be required to, uh, you know, if it didn't, uh, pass, the city would be required to make, uh, many difficult choices. This could be a possibility, uh, up to and including, um, brownouts or even closing a fire station. So next steps, um, we would provide further information to, uh, property owners via mail and digital outreach about the upcoming assessment, mail out the notice, um, which we would need to do, um, almost, uh, just within the week, and then, uh, continue our informational outreach, uh, out to the property owners. Public hearing would be on June 11th. Uh, ballots are, uh, tabulated. Um, they will be tabulated the day after June 11th, June 12th. And if a majority of, uh, ballots are not against, adopt the resolution, continuing the fire suppression assessment. After you adopt the resolution, um, there would be a second meeting afterwards, um, where we would actually have the, uh, full amounts again. That's usually the, uh, process. You'd have to adopt the resolution so that you can do this, and then a second one that lists all of the amounts for all of the parcels. So, uh, staff recommends, uh, that the city council adopt the two attached resolutions, which approve the engineer's report, uh, in support of the updated fire suppression assessment, beginning in 2425, and declare its intention to conduct a property owner balloting on the matter of this reauthorization of the fire assessment and to levy annual assessments commencing in fiscal year 2425, until fiscal year 20, uh, 33, 34.
Okay. Thank you so much for the presentation. I just kind of want to lead off here. Uh, one comment for the benefit of the public. Um, Mr. Sung, if you can bring back the cost, um, of this assessment on the per dwelling unit? There you go. So it's $199 per dwelling unit. Um, some might say that's a lot, but I will say, given the fact that California has had a lot of insurance carrier exiting the homeowner's insurance market, there is a huge increase in homeowner's insurance cost. Um, and maintaining an effective, uh, and high quality fire service and emergency services is important to keep everybody's home insurance, uh, at a affordable rate. And imagine if that service becomes, um, less than optimal, and insurance carrier exit the Millbrae market, it will cost homeowner even more money to try to get their home insured. So, you know, if you look at an overall cost saving, uh, and at the same time providing good, um, responsive, high quality, um, public safety services. This is the best solution there is for the people of Millbrae. Um, and as they pay into it, will provide great emergency services. Um, and in the long run, it will save them even more money, uh, by not having to pay higher insurance premium. So just want to kind of start off with that discussion. And, uh, any other council members? Councilmember Pappan?
Uh, once again, can you send us each this, um, PowerPoint? Because we have to answer the residents' questions frequently, and hopefully the council will be a little more active in, um, communicating this, and we really want to get the message out that appreciate all those people who voted for it last time, and, um, the importance of continuing these efforts here, as the mayor pointed out. Fire safety, one of, with, um, all the climate action, uh, the results that are happening here, fire risk, wildfire risks are a reality, and we need to maintain our services to the best quality we can. And this measure enables us to do so. It is so important. We have a lot of canyons around us. Um, we just, we have to stay on top of this, and we, we need to keep both stations in Millbrae open. So the one at the top of the hill and the one at the bottom of the hill to maintain the response time. So hopefully we can all work together, uh, reaching out. I'm glad to know. And, um, if you could too, I, this is the one time, these type of assessments, we know who voted yes and who voted no. If that information could be shared with the council, um, we can maybe talk to some of our friends who weren't as enlightened, um, and get them to vote yes this time. It's not a, it's not a given. I mean, I've heard people in the past, oh, well, I'm voting no, but it's going to pass anyway. Well, it didn't. Um, so we really want to be encouraging to people, uh, as to the importance of this, emphasizing all those aspects of it. Um, so the more information you can share with the members of this council, because we interact with the people a lot, um, hopefully we can assist. And we would also like to, um, you know, work with the fire representatives, the fire union, and, um, all those great people who serve our community. Um, in the past, they've been very helpful in helping us get the message out. So that would be great. Thank you.
So noted, um, the, um, fire, uh, fire actually sent a couple of representatives to all of the, um, public meetings, all the community meetings. It was either always the fire chief, the, um, deputy, or a battalion chief that always showed up. So they had very good representation at the community.
Excellent. Thank you. Any other comments? Nope. Okay. All right. How about motion? Both at the same time? Okay. Any public comment? I don't, don't see any hand raised. I certainly don't have any slips in front of me here. Okay. All right. So, um, we have a motion from Mr. Vice Mayor? Do we have a second? We have a second from Councilmember Kaylin? No further comments? City Clerk, please.
Councilmember Pappan?
Yes.
Councilmember Kaylin?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Goodman?
Aye.
Mayor Fong?
Aye.
Item number 15, passed by a vote of four to zero with Councilmember Snyder excused.
Excellent. Thank you so much. And council comment, we have about, um, 18 minutes. Who would like to go first? Good. Councilmember Pappan?
Uh, thank you very much. Uh, many of us, uh, attended the progress seminar in Sonoma this weekend. Uh, very informative. Uh, I moderated the transportation panel. What happens, um, since people are not going to work these days? And the importance of public transportation still exists. SAM Trans, which is our bus system, is doing quite well. Um, recovering from COVID, the train systems are not doing quite as well, but they're running special programs. There are equity programs available to help people get on transit now, because we, we do need public transit for the environment and really, um, moving people around. Most people, um, that have been taking public transportation during COVID were those who have no other alternative. And now people have lots of alternatives, and we want to encourage them to get back on public transit. And we recognize that BART is still a problem, but, um, we are hoping there will be more coordination. There are also talk about a measure to fund public transportation and also infrastructure. Please note that we, most agencies, C CAG, SAM Trans, Caltrain, have all opposed what's known as S B 1031 unless amended. And that is so that we can ensure our fair share. We can ensure that this is not just a bailout for BART and Muni. So it's a work in progress that we hope will proceed here. Also note, um, Assemblymember Pappan has an alternative bill to get more accountability. Uh, she's also working on getting our V L F funds back, which are funds that, um, our community really needs, and it seems to be a struggle. And one, another bill is called the Likes Bill. Uh, I hope I can find it here. Uh, just to bring this up, long-term investment for kids' emotional support. Uh, it's A B 2829, and since we talked about mental health earlier, this is groundbreaking legislation, holding big tech and social media accountable for youth mental health impacts. Um, it's a struggle because they're so, such big operators, and they don't really want to participate in this. But this bill really could make a difference in funding mental health for, um, all of our children, which there was an article or guest perspective in the paper today, which was very moving. And, um, it's really, really important there. Um, commute.org has several programs going on. It's that time of year where they're reaching out to, uh, businesses to encourage them. There's a challenge, uh, going on this month. You can look on their website, May, April 1st through May 31st. Um, all kinds of awards going on. If you'll take public transportation or alternative methods to getting to work, wonderful programs there. Um, new legislation too. Everybody's been talking about the raise in P G and E rates. Supposedly there's new ed legislation to try to bring those back, um, and keep things, um, more affordable, because everything is going up. And for once, I'd like to welcome a new resident to Millbrae. Kinsey Tsang Bankovich was born on Earth Day. So it's kind of nice to acknowledge new residents as they appear in our community. And, um, we generally recognize those who have passed, but congratulations to her parents, Jell and Kevin. And, um, that's it. Thank you.
Standing tall at 19 inches and weighing into this brand new world at 7 pound and 14 ounces.
Yep.
There we go. All right. Ms. Kaylin, would you like to?
Yes, um, just, uh, a few brief things. Um, the progress seminar this weekend was really wonderful. Lots of excellent content and great opportunities to talk with, um, council members from neighboring cities around issues that impact our cities together and how we can collaborate and work, um, on, on projects and, uh, make a greater impact, whether it's from working with large organizations or bringing in more revenue, uh, by working more closely together. So, uh, great conversations started and looking forward to more to come. Um, I think, um, it would be good sooner rather than later to have an update on where the progress stands with our humanitarian ceasefire resolution process. Um, and if nothing is coming to fruition, to bring that back to council sooner than later, so that we don't leave our community hanging. Um, tonight, we had quite a few residents speak, um, around, um, our T O T revenue. And we can hear from the community, there's a lot of concern about the budget. I think it's very helpful to see where the budget stands as we go through the process for planning for next year. But I think it could be helpful for all of us to just see very clearly what our T O T has been. So I'd like to make a request, um, to provide the council from like fiscal year 19 through present day for each of our hotels, what the T O T has been.
Yeah, well, we can bring that back at the next meeting. I'd be happy to do that.
That would be great.
You mean from 2019, uh, for the last five years?
Yeah, just one year pre-COVID through the present.
Yeah, we, we actually have 2018, because we negotiated with Mike Kelly, so we'll just bring that forward.
Yeah, a historical perspective would be very, very valuable. Sorry, didn't mean to cut you off.
No, I think it'd just be really helpful for, for folks to, uh, see those e- exact numbers and understand. Yeah. So, thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Yes.
Please.
Just like to take the opportunity to publicly, again, recognize our, um, our library as Millbrae's, uh, representative to the San Mateo County Library, J P A. And as an educator, I continue to see the benefit of our great library system. Um, today's library are not the, the libraries of the past, um, of being just books and having the, you know, the Dewey Decimal System and everything, but more, uh, community spaces designed for people to gather, connect, explore, and do more. Um, by investing in our maker spaces, we invested in our community's future. Um, this has been a long time coming. Um, this is definitely something that was made possible by our tremendous volunteers, uh, friends at the library, and our library team led by, uh, Jess Lum, that you've met earlier today or this evening, um, and inspired by our wonderful, uh, creative community of learners, young and old. Um, additionally, I attended the, um, as your representative to the Peninsula Division Executive Committee of the League of California Cities, I attended the recent ledge conference up in Sacramento, um, where we were able to meet, uh, state legislators, um, and all other statewide elected city leaders. I also met with our city, uh, lobbyists, uh, to discuss Millbrae issues, as well as attending the, uh, progress seminar.
Hey, thank you very much. Um, I just, I want to be brief. This is already almost 11 o'clock at night. Uh, but I just wanted to thank the friends of the Millbrae Library who donated, um, nearly $300,000 worth of funding to make, um, to enable the maker space to come to fruition after years of planning. And also, I forgot to thank our, uh, favorite, uh, D B W director, Sam Batista, for, uh, coordinating all those effort. Um, you know, with the constructions and, uh, it's been years, long time coming. So finally being able to cut the ribbon and let our seniors and our children to use that maker space and using those 3D printers to realize the dreams and the design, uh, and be able to, um, foot up the design and work, um, on all the dreams they have for all of us, um, and, and design for the future. So that's wonderful to see. Um, obviously, everybody already talked about the progress seminar. I don't have to repeat that. Um, and with that, um, thank you so much for tonight's meeting, and I adjourn this meeting tonight at 10:51 P M.